Okay, good evening to you all. And if you're wondering why we're starting a tad late, I'll just say the mayor is responsible for that. We were trying to get in touch with a person or two, and I think most of them are here now. And so tonight is our special work session night, and so our schedule is a little bit different. But we will still begin with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Okay, and I do have a word from Councilmember Vance that he's delayed by maybe at least 20 minutes or so, so we expect him to join us fairly soon. Thank you. Okay, council, all of you should have received a copy of the agenda for our work session this evening. What say you in terms of adoption of the agenda?
Move that we approved, the agenda is presented.
Okay, is there a second? Properly segmented? Any discussion or question? Hearing none, all in favor of adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
There is no opposition, and so it is so ordered. Okay. This evening, we have several items, and we're going to follow the agenda as printed. But just before we get into the first discussion report, I'd like to recognize our planning commission. I think several of the members are here this evening, and maybe one or two are joining us virtually, I believe. So you'll forgive me if I mispronounce a name. Hopefully, I won't do that. But let's begin by recognizing Mr. John Blasco. Where's John? There he is, thank you. Okay, and Mal, bang Mal?
It's by teams tonight.
I'm sorry?
He's joining us by teams tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you. Dean Fox, I saw Mr. Fox, yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Fox. And Byra Hogan, yeah, there you are, okay, thank you. Philip Jefferson.
He may be joining us by teams later.
Okay, all right, okay. And Michael Bullen, okay, Mr. Bullen. And Gina Avant. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here. I haven't had a chance, I guess, to meet each one of you, but, and I've probably heard your names pronounced before, but forgive me if I was a little hesitant on those. But we're glad to have you here this evening. It's a very important discussion we're having on the first item. So with that said, I'm going to recognize our planning director, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, for a discussion and report on item number one. And maybe you have someone else you're going to introduce as well, Mr. Trezenberg, is that correct? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Good to be here this evening. Tonight, I have with me both Mr. Jay McLeod and Mr. Chad Serry from Stewart. They are the consulting team for the UDO rewrite. So welcome, planning commission members as well. This will be the first of what's anticipated to be four joint planning commission and town council meetings. This first one is devoted to the amendments that we need to have in place no later than July 1st of 2021. We're currently on what we believe is a schedule for probably March timeframe. These are related to the adoption by the state legislature of a couple of session laws that have led to a recodification of planning statutes. We kind of refer to them as 160D. The current municipal stuff is in 160A, and so they're completely wiping that clean and have reorganized and streamlined some things. The most significant that I would say for us is the elimination of conditional use zoning. So where we do that combined quasi-judicial legislative proceeding, that is no longer allowed. So we will be adopting what's known as conditional zoning, so no use. They sound pretty much the same, but the former was conditional use, now we'll be doing just conditional. It's purely a legislative process, so there's a number of things that we need to have changed to get our ordinance in line with that, as well as some other various procedural changes. So Stewart has been leading us through that. Primarily, these amendments affect Articles 1, 2, 3, 9, and 10. So we have, we do anticipate that there probably will not be a need to edit those chapters much further as part of the rewrite process. But there will be, I'm sure, some changes as we get to the final product at the very end. So this is kind of a two-step process that we're going through because of the 160D deadline. So I think with that, I've pretty well covered it, and Jay's got a presentation to kind of lead you through the highlights. And feel free to ask questions along the way. I know he's got a couple of formal pauses built into the presentation as well, but please don't hesitate to ask if you do have any questions.
I have one quickly, a sort of a frivolous question, I guess.
Sure.
But just for my application, what's a good way to refer to this? Could we just refer to the 160D changes?
Right.
I'm sure there's more formal name for it.
Right. Technically, it'll be UDO, text amendment, UDO 2002. But yes, 160D is kind of just how we've been referring to it.
Okay, that's the nickname, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so without further ado, Mr. Jay McLeod.
Okay. Welcome, sir. We appreciate you being here. We've, I guess I should say, we've looked forward to your presentation, or we knew it was coming anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. I don't always hear that about UDO updates.
Okay, we know it's necessary.
Thank you all for your time this evening, I really appreciate it. As Jeff said, my name's Jay McLeod, and I'm with Stewart. Chad Serry is also here, he's our practice area leader for our municipal planning group. Should be able to click this around, but I might have to queue it up. Oh, thank you. Should be already up, right. But I'm here just to kind of bring everyone up to speed. This is kind of the beginning of the update to the ordinance based on the state's realigned statutes. As Jeff mentioned, when we started the UDO update, the deadline for the state mandated adoption of the 160D, Chapter 160D revisions, was actually January 1st. And then a tiny but very serious global pandemic hit us, and they kind of realigned things a little bit and gave global governments until July 1st. But we're still trying to move forward with the schedule as much as we can and make sure, despite being slowed down a little bit, make sure that we're still being responsive to that initial schedule. So tonight, I just kind of wanted to briefly talk about the status of the Unified Development Ordinance update, and that's UDO, if I say that instead of the full name. I want to explain a little bit more about Chapter 160D, talk about the public input we've had to date, and then also go through just kind of the highlights of the ordinance updates as part of this first kind of update package. So to start with, this is our project team. You can see Chad and I there. Also on our team are Allison Evans and Caroline Richardson, who are planners in our municipal planning group. The municipal planning group is a small portion of Stewart, but it's our favorite portion. The rest of the company is mostly civil engineers and structural engineers, landscape architects, surveyors, geotechnical construction managers, and testing experts. But we're based here in Raleigh. We also have offices across the state and down in South Carolina, and we are working directly with the planning department, who is being, you know, serving at the leisure of the steering committee and the technical advisory, which is primarily staff members who are experts in their subject matter, like for instance, the town engineer, parks and rec director, emergency services, and public safety, et cetera. And then, of course, we are all at the leisure of the council and the residents of the town of Garner. The rest on our team there, on the bottom, you'll see Jake Petrowski, who's GIS expert, Dave Boyett, and Ross Massey, who are civil engineers, who we refer to on matters having to do with coordination with public utilities. And then on the right, bottom right there, Katie Hamilton and Stephen Faber, who are landscape architects, and we consult them whenever we have questions about landscaping and so forth. So we're fortunate at Stewart that we have a broad talent pool to pull from, which means that we can then, you know, test against real-world examples in other communities and bring those best practices forward. So for those that don't know, the town already has a UDO, and this is part of updating that. It defines how you can use land, subdivide land, and develop land within the town, and it also contains the rules for applying for those different changes in the use or development of land, as well as what happens if you don't follow the rules. And so in a nutshell, that's kind of what our UDO is. Our project timeline kicked off at the beginning of this year. We've had a few public engagement events so far. You can kind of see in the middle of that slide, Phase 2, kind of has the different subject areas of the Unified Development Ordinance broken out. We're kind of in the middle. The 160D edits encompass the entire ordinance, but as we work through the Garner Forward edits, which are more related to substantive updates based on recommendations from a comprehensive plan that was recently updated, and the transportation plans, those will work their way through the articles and be brought back again for review. And then the anticipated end of the project is kind of towards the end of next year, and that includes probably, most probably, it does include a remapping to realign with potentially new or consolidated zoning districts that may arise in a later part of the revisions. So this is kind of the basic structure of the UDO as it stands, and I have these kind of broken off into two buckets. There's the administrative or procedural buckets, which are the Articles 1, 2, 3, 9, and 10. And then we have kind of the more regulatory standards, the things that people mostly associate, which have to do with things like zoning districts, setbacks, building height restrictions, development standards, right-of-way widths, sidewalk requirements, you know, parks and rec signage requirements. Those are the things that people mostly think of. But the administrative and procedural articles have to do more with the establishment of the planning board and the Board of Adjustment, the rules by which they operate, who reviews different, which bodies review different types of applications, and then the rules for non-conformities and enforcement of the Unified Development Ordinance. And so you see in the columns there, the 160D is the conformance with the state statutes realignment, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But then, since we are in the process of updating the entire ordinance to implement the recommendations of the newly adopted comprehensive plan and transportation plan, we have gone ahead and brought those recommendations and those modifications to the ordinance forward in this batch of the UDO that's before you now. And the reason for that is because they are administrative, and then for the most part, they didn't actually, they aligned with best practices and didn't actually change substantive portions of the UDO that would, you know, this is kind of the back-of-house UDO, and they were ready to come, and we figured this would be a good time to bring these forward. So like I said earlier, and like Jeff said, this kind of involves a two-stage adoption process. Right now, we want to make sure that we are compliant with the state's changes to Chapter 160D statutes at the state level before the July 1st deadline. And so that involves basically Phase 1, which is what we have now, what we're bringing right now today, to kind of start this review and adoption process at the public boards. But then in the future, you will see a Phase 2, which will be the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plan updates to the full regulatory articles, those 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 11, which are those zoning standards and subdivision standards and so forth. But that'll be kind of at a later date, later this year, maybe early next year. But I just kind of wanted to lay that out, kind of the plan we currently have for moving these modifications forward through the review process, and to show you that it's kind of So this is just a very brief primer on the general statute changes related to Chapter 160D. But basically, prior to this realignment, there hadn't been any major changes in decades. Counties had their own version of development regulation law, cities had theirs, they were largely identical, and there was some confusion occasionally about certain provisions, and the state finally decided to clarify that and bring those together, put them in one place, streamline a few things, eliminate some uncertainty, consolidate and organize some of the statutes so they're a little bit more usable. One of the big things they did was clarify the decision types into administrative, which are objectively measured standards that can be, they're just kind of a yes/no, you either meet the standard or you don't. Legislative, which is the jurisdiction of the council, which involves discretionary decisions made in the best interest of the public. And then quasi-judicial, which are evidence-based decisions that involve making sure that the components of due process are met for the applicant, and things like ex parte communication are prohibited, and there's findings to be made by the presentation of competent substantial material evidence. So one of the things Jeff mentioned is a big change statewide, is that the conditional use zoning that we have now is going to be going away, and it's going to be replaced with conditional zoning, which unfortunately, they didn't come up with a less similar name for that. But nevertheless, what it means is that conditional zoning is now going to be a legislative process, which we kind of have this table laid out in the bottom there, mostly to emphasize the differences between those three procedures, and kind of to emphasize the fact that, you know, the quasi-judicial process is somewhat difficult for most members of the public to get their arms around and their head wrapped around. And so really, moving to this legislative process is generally, I think, going to be a benefit to the public in terms of understanding and being able to comment on and participate in those conditional zoning requests, which are very specific requests for rezoning and involve basically writing new chapters of the UDO. So I think that's going to be a really good thing that comes out of this, and we have brought the code up to that standard, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in So before I talk about the public input we've received so far, are there any questions kind of about just the background of the project or anything along those lines?
Council, you're good.
Can you, a couple of questions on timeline. So can you clarify the adoption of the 160D provisions, and then the adoption of the other recommendations that aren't necessarily 160D-related? And I saw on the agenda that there was a call for a hearing in October for those, and so I'm curious, is the idea to implement all of those, and is there, what date would those go into effect? Do they go into effect when they're adopted? Would we say, set a later date in January or March when they would come into effect? Because I'm seeing, I'm seeing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and I'm also seeing like a phase almost one-half with some of this 160D stuff.
Right. Yes, so in terms of the actual implementation date, often it's customary to just make it effective when it's adopted. So for instance, when Phase 1, if and when Phase 1 is adopted, it would be implemented, it would be effective the next day. It's possible to choose a later date, if that's the will of the council, and if that's how the ordinance is set up to adopt that. But yes, so the package before you today for review, and that would presumably be adopted later this year to make the town compliant with the 160D state requirements, would also include, as it currently stands, the Garner Forward updates to those administrative articles, which are 1, 2, 3, 9, and 10. And when we get to the highlights, I'll kind of touch on, you know, what those kind of best practices and Garner Forward recommendations were. But, you know, if you have any questions, you can ask me. Does that answer your question?
Sort of, because another question is, how difficult would it be to accelerate the entire process? Because what you have in Phase 2 is, you have Phase 1, where you're doing your 160D, and you need Garner Forward changes, you're implementing them, and then we're saying, well, we're going to continue this process, and then we'll come back, and if there are things we need to change again, and those, we'll do those again. Like, so, and I would imagine all those would require public hearings to make those changes that, you know, to see where we, so...
Yeah, well, that's, you know, in a perfect world, I wish the state had pushed the adoption date to October instead of July, because then we probably could have maintained, we could expedite the schedule and got all the revisions in one big package at that date. And yes, it is enough to make your head spin trying to keep two ordinances separate that are the same ordinance and have, you know, a number of differences between them and similarities. But with the amount of public involvement that we're hoping to have in Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10, like I said, those are the ones that people care about, because they're the things that you can really wrap your arms around. It's the zoning districts, and the height standards, and the setbacks, and, you know, character areas and so forth, subdivision requirements. Those are the things we anticipate having more public involvement in, as opposed to the administrative articles. So we did want to make sure we preserved some space to have that public input. And so expediting the schedule seemed like it was unfeasible at the time. I mean, I'm sure Jeff and I can take a look at it again and see if that's the direction that you all want to go, if we can pull that off. We could take another look at it, but it is, it is kind of tough. So the Phase 1, you know, the changes in Phase 1, we're making sure that we're compliant with the state, and also that the wheel, that there's no halt in service from the implementation of UDO to the public and to the private sector who utilize it. But at the same time, the changes in 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 11 would likely, likely have more public input probably than the administrative articles.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah, I just get concerned with continuity, when you're, not just the continuity, but also you're presenting the opportunity for mistakes and gaps that are unforeseen, that will be sort of constantly in motion at the same time. And so who knows legally what happens if there's a loophole or a crack, and somebody submits an application, and then they can do X, Y, and Z, and we don't have that covered because it's a hole that was created by accident in either a procedure or a process or a rezoning type. So I'm a little concerned, especially because the process itself is complicated. A UDO rewrite is complicated enough, just going linearly, but you start overlapping and, I know, just being on the committee, it's very, it is very challenging to keep track of what was taken out, what's new, and then you're going to do it again, and then those have to, again, so I'm just, just those are sort of my concerns at the moment with the phasing as it's laid out so far.
Right. Well, fortunately, we do have a pretty organized system back in the servers in terms of keeping a track of these and revision dates and the differences between them. Ultimately, Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, the zoning and the development standards and setbacks and so forth, are not changing substantively. So those standards remain. The only things that are being taken out are things primarily relate or realigned, are primarily related to instances where undue quasi-judicial discretion was given to administrative officials. So for instance, a section of code would say you have to install a 10-foot landscaping buffer unless the planning director says otherwise, which is not, there's no standard there for an administrative decision to be made. That's a judgment call, and the statutes are pretty clear in wanting to separate those two processes. So if you have that, and so in that case, it's a very easy instance of realigning that and saying you have to have a 10-foot buffer, because we already have a mechanism in the code when people feel like they're a special exception. It's the variance, we have a Board of Adjustment, it goes to them, they have a quasi-judicial hearing, which involves subjective decision-making based on evidence. And so we have that pressure relief valve still, and so we're keeping track of those as we move along and making sure we're not leading to those unintended consequences or loopholes. And at the same time, you know, most of what's in 160D, you could, aside from the standards that are specific to the town, the procedures are for the most part universals statewide at this point. So, you know, we're making sure that we're in line with that, but also bringing forward the, and keeping the things in Garner that make, that Garner uses based on their organizational structure of the departments and their review procedures and other standards. I know that gets, you know, that's jargony, but...
Okay, and I...
Gets deep in the weeds with UDOs real fast, as you know.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Quick comment, I was going to say, I don't want to get us hung up this early in the process, we got a long ways to go, I know, but at any rate, is it reasonable to basically expect that the Phase 2 and the whole thing should be completed by, as you say here, early 2022? You're not aware of any unusual obstacles or anything that might would throw that date further into the future?
I don't see any from where we are right now. I think that's pretty reasonable, and we've, so far, been hitting all our milestones in our schedule. What would you say?
Yeah, no, that's, that's really being, I would say, conservative at this point. I just don't want to put a date out there that implies much sooner, because there is so much work that has to happen between then and there, and I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. But we do, we do hope to be in advance of that date, so that's kind of the worst-case scenario in our minds.
Okay, good, thanks. Anybody else other than Mr. Dillinger? Okay, proceed, please.
Thank you. And that Phase 2 will come back through this exact same meeting structure and public review period, as previously mentioned. So to date, we've had several public input and involvement meetings. Of course, we have the bulk of our direction already recorded in the publicly adopted plans, the transportation plan and the comprehensive plan, and I won't read through, you know, all of these, but these are the basic, this is the very brief summary of what is in those reports and in those adopted plans. And those are our roadmap forward for updating and implementing those recommendations. And then the UDO is our tool, in the planning department at least, and for other departments in implementing those recommendations. We also had a community tour with town staff, where we looked at what has been recently happening development-wise, what has worked, what hasn't worked, where we can improve, and other opportunities and constraints. Forgive me, this is my only picture of one of our stakeholder meetings, we had several over a couple days, but this is the one I got a picture of. And so we also had stakeholder interviews for almost a day and a half, I believe, including some follow-up meetings, because there was a blizzard one of the, one of the meetings. But in general, the guidance we got, you can see, kind of bulleted out there. Also, as part of the tour and stakeholder interviews, we talked about character-rich areas like the downtown. We talked about new development, the opportunities for, you know, the better utilization of land, for instance, turning stormwater features into potentially outdoor amenities, looking and reevaluating the recreation requirements, and making sure we consider different street cross-sections, especially in some of the more character-rich and older parts of town. Standards for new requirements that we've had passed down to us from the feds, like the cluster mailbox units, which are now a requirement for large new developments. We talked about landscaping, street trees, when and where sidewalks should be required, how the planned development districts have been working, and what has worked and what maybe could use improvement. Incidentally, the planned development districts, of course, will be moving towards that conditional zoning process, so they won't disappear, but they will be going through a legislative process. We had a public informational meeting. This occurred on April 15th, so it was kind of right after the pandemic really kind of put a lockdown on everything. But we have discovered at Stewart that, you know, we've had to stretch our virtual engagement, and it's actually proved more engaging than potentially in-person meetings. There are not, usually not too many people that are interested in reading a full UDO, but we have found that people are more interested in tuning in from their couch at their leisure to kind of be caught up to speed on it. So I think that's a positive that's come out of this, if anything, is that we've had an opportunity to kind of spread the word around more broadly, and have more people involved. And this event actually did have some question to answer at the end, and we also received some email comments afterwards that we've kind of cataloged, and we're making sure we keep aware of as we move forward into those substantive regulatory articles and updates to those. And of course, the town maintains a project website with all the materials from our meetings and the most current information on the project. So are there any questions about the public? So are there any questions about the public engagement as, before I move on to the highlights of the UDO update?
Thank you.
So as I said, we've kind of grouped these into two buckets, the administrative articles and then the regulatory articles. The ones we're talking about today include, in the administrative side of things, the 160D edits and the Garner Forward edits. And then on the regulatory side of things, it's just the 160D edits, revisions. As we move forward, we expect there will be probably pretty major revisions to those, which may result in some trickle-down revisions back to the administrative side of things, but probably not substantive changes to administrative articles. In general, the full update will achieve the following. We want to make sure we have a more user-friendly document. We want to make sure our purpose, intent, and applicability sections are accurate and reflective of the character and the desires of the town as expressed in the comprehensive plan, as well as engagement with the public. We want to make sure that we clarify which decisions are made at which level and provide objective administrative standards for those that can proceed smoothly through the administrative process where needed. And then simplify and clarify regulatory administration and enforcement because at the end of the day, if you create a standard for something, you have to ensure that it's being followed. And so that involves a administrative infrastructure in the departments for enforcing the regulations in the UDO. For Article One, it establishes the bodies of review. And so we have clarified those. I'm sorry. Article One is the general provisions. So it's the establishment of the zoning map, enforcement, ability to enforce the state-enabling zoning legislation, and it establishes any kind of transitional provisions, which in this case, all the planned unit developments and planned developments and existing conditional use districts are going to just transition seamlessly into conditional zoning districts at the time of adoption. Same entitlements, same conditions, same standards. So that'll be a seamless transition. Article Two is the, establishes the planning board and the board of adjustment and other rules of procedure. We have kind of untangled some of the rules of procedure for those bodies from their establishment as a, as a regulatory body. And so those rules have been pulled into their respective places. Article Three is the review procedures. So this tells people how to apply for a variance or how to apply for a subdivision. We've removed conditional use permits because that's a state-mandated change. Those can be replaced with other review procedures. Currently, the conditional zoning review process that you have before you has come out of discussions with the steering committee. It involves a two-tier conditional zoning standard. In the lower tier, Tier One, a person wants to upzone a piece of property, and they choose their base zoning district from the general use district, and then they say, but we don't necessarily need these higher intensity uses. And then maybe the neighborhood is a little bit more okay with that because it's the lower intensity uses of that upzoning. In Tier Two, it's a little bit more, a little bit more self-guided, and the applicant would provide a bubble plan that shows generally where those uses are going to be, talks about the maximum intensity, and maybe set some additional setbacks or additional landscaping buffering to kind of mitigate their use and mitigate impacts on their neighbors. And so in that case, the discussion will revolve around, is the proposed use as its design sufficiently buffered from having an impact on the neighbors? And so that's what we are proposing currently in terms of the standards for conditional zoning. And that kind of evolved out of conversations with the steering committee, but I don't think they have seen that in writing yet. So, and then we've kind of realigned some other, other regulatory standards to the appropriate articles, like Article Seven. Article Nine is non-conformities. So we've kind of clarified that and incorporated an applicability matrix for when certain site element upfits are required. And then Article Ten's enforcement, and there are really no Chapter 160D requirements necessary to that article, and nor were there any best practices or other recommendations that the town didn't already have and was following. So that is primarily undisturbed. For Articles, the rest of the Articles, the regulatory Articles, for the most part, we've just clarified where administrative decisions are appropriate and where quasi judicial decisions were not, or how they can be realigned to the board of adjustment. And then we've removed, removed the language about conditional uses, which is, like I said, going away per the state and being supplemented potentially with special uses or conditional zoning. But we'll be revising these further in the future. And that, if there are any questions about kind of the highlights there or any kind of nitty-gritty questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? We'll probably have some later, as you continue.
Okay, thank you. So moving forward, it's kind of two stages here. At the bottom, you'll see kind of the marching orders for this, the planning department staff and the rest of town staff that's involved, the technical committee, steering committee, and ourselves, consultant. We want to continue our revisions to the regulatory articles and bring those back later in the year, and continue public outreach and make sure we're reaching people and letting them know what's going on so that they can be involved to the greatest extent that they want to be involved. And then also, for what we have now, this package in front of you today, we want to hopefully set an October date for a public hearing and then kind of release this to review by the other bodies that are recommend and review prior to the council hearing it again. And so that is, I believe that's the request today. Jeff may be able to wordsmith that a little bit better than I did. But this really is kind of the conclusion of the presentation.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't want to be overly speculative, but given the state that we're in right now with the pandemic, I suppose, the processes that will move us along this track, I don't know if you've built in any extra time in case, well, I guess some of these meetings will have to be, take place virtually anyway. When I think of public meetings, I mean, I think of people gathering and coming into a place. But nobody can predict, you know, where we'll be three months from now, four months from now, I don't believe. But I was just wondering if that's an element of your consideration as we move forward?
It certainly has been, and we have been realigning our public engagement strategy to be responsive to that. That public informational meeting that we had in April 15th, I feel like with 2,100 views really reached a lot more people than we ever could have, ever could have done in person.
Right.
You know, I think what they say is half the people will never go to a public meeting, no matter what you do, just because they're busy and they have things, and that's not, that's not what they do. But, but a lot of people will take three minutes or six minutes on their phone, on the couch, or on wherever to kind of look at something that comes across their Facebook feed. So I think we've actually expanded that average. But we are looking at ways to do that and make sure that we have opportunities for comment and meaningful comment and criticism from the public as we move forward.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, we'll do a round, probably, if we need to. Any questions over here? Or comments? Mr. Matthews?
Not right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
None right now.
Okay. See, Mr. Vance?
Yes, apologize to be in late counseling, Mr. Mayor.
Quite all right. You're forgiven. Thank you for being here. Okay, no questions at this point? Staff, town manager or assistant managers? Okay?
I don't have anything at this time.
And, well, I guess we'll have some other discussion. Planning Commission members? No? Okay. All right.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you all for Planning Commission, Steering Committee, and the council for all being in one room together so we can all hear this and have this discussion. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Jeff, anything else you have?
No, sir. With counsel's blessing, we would like to go ahead and plan to move forward with the public hearing, which would be the second step for the second meeting in October. I know September is very full, and we do want to still allow time for folks to submit comments now that the full drafts are out there. So we felt, you know, having a month and a half was probably reasonable to accommodate that. Certainly, we've been collecting comments all along the way. We've gotten comments and input from both steering committee and the public portion. And then we've also had some internal meetings with staff to gather comments as well. So again, if with your blessing, we'd like to go ahead and move towards an October 20th public hearing. Again, that's just step number two. After that, it goes back to the full planning commission and then back to you one more time.
Okay. So basically, you're asking the council to affirm the October 20th as a public hearing date. Is that right? Okay. I don't know that we need a formal motion, but I'll be happy to hear one from council to affirm this recommendation.
So moved. Is recommended by Mr. Treesenberg?
Okay, and I believe Field you second that. Okay, any question, discussion?
One quick question related to the timing, and I guess this is for Jeff or consultant. So we're, the hearing, commission, and back again. As far as drafts and policy recommendations with regards to the changes, so I know right now we're dealing, working on some timing issues with commission minutes coming to council and this kind of thing. Are we going to be looking at drafting those sort of in concert with this so that they match up and we don't adopt that without having other procedures we're working on, sort of implemented on top of the actual UDO? Should we be continuing to work on that stuff and make sure that it's in line?
Yeah. Yes, we will. Yeah, because I'm anticipating that between the public hearing and going to planning commission, there'll be a little extra buffer in there as well as it coming back to y'all for the final decision. And we're making some modifications internally to kind of help with that process and change as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe a vote is in order. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. And it's so ordered. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. Okay, Mr. Franks, I believe you're up next. Update on park fee in lieu, calculate, excuse me, calculation. Mr. Mike Franks, our, that's your director. Thank you all for your, for coming this evening.
I thought they'd all want to stick around for this. Tonight, I'm here, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
To talk about the parkland fee and lieu calculation, the presentation overview of a summary of the enacting legislation and restrictions, overview of current fees and comparison to other Wake County localities, and a summary of staff recommendations. So in terms of the enabling legislation, which is 160A, 372E, there are essentially three big takeaways. The developer can provide a town money, monetary contribution in lieu of providing park space. The town then would have to use those funds for the purpose of development of recreation park or open sites. So in lieu of building the recreation site, the town would then, or the city would then be responsible for providing those amenities. It also requires that the formula for enacting it be based on the value of the development or subdivision for property tax purposes. So those are the three big takeaways. Developers can provide the fee in lieu, as opposed to providing recreation or parks. The town has to use those funds for that purpose, for the development of parks, and the fee has to be based on the value of the development or subdivision for property tax purposes. In addition to the state legislation, Section 6.2 of the town charter grants separate authorities to charge this fee. So I won't read this, but it is within the state legislation and as well as the town's charter. In terms of fee in lieu within Garner, the town's methodology had not been updated for several years, the methodology for calculating the fee. So as part of this year's budget, we looked at a variety of different development-related fees, and it was determined that several other localities were charging significantly different rates than us, and it was probably time to go ahead and take a look at that rate and the fee and the methodology behind it. So as you can see with the regional comparison, Garner is at the top in terms of the chart, towards the bottom in terms of the fee. So for single-family detached, Garner was 1,147 per unit, and multifamily townhome apartment was 895 per unit. And then especially as you look down towards Lake Forest, Holly Springs, and Apex, which were some of the localities that have revised their methodology or taken a look more recently, the per-unit cost was significantly higher. So based on that, we determined that it was time to go ahead and take another look, looked at a couple of other localities methodologies, and came up with our own, which I will now walk you through. So here's the revised methodology, but I think it makes it a little bit easier to actually just go ahead and look at the PDF that you guys had included, or the other document, the draft parkland fee and lieu calculation. So we looked at a couple different data sets. So for the per household estimates, so basically the number of people in a household, for single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily, we used the American Community Survey for Southern Wake area, Garner, and Fuquay. Compr, the max, the Parks Master Plan also included information on the acres of parkland per person and greenway miles per person. So you can see for parkland per person, the plan states 10.5 acres per 1,000 population, and for greenway, it's plan states one mile per 1,000 population. So those are included in the calculation as well. And there's some additional information here, but that is less critical. And then the 2020 average value of raw lands. So this is something that we had the planning department run a GIS report and look at a variety of different parcels within the town to determine what the average value was of raw land, of undeveloped lands, and that's based on Wake County tax records, and that is 45,408 per acre. Then moving down, the acres of parkland required per single-family detached, and we broke it down, as other localities did, by single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily. So this is just the detached version. So you can see the park acres per person, per the comp plan, and the per household, which is again based on the American Community Survey figures. And we take the same methodology for the greenway required, for a few revisions there in terms of getting in the right format, but the per household of 2.81, greenway acres per person, .00182, and then there's the greenway acres per household. And then we took these figures, the greenway acres per household and the park acres per household, and applied that, or multiplied that by the average cost of the vacant lands. So for example, you can see the park acres per household, the .02951 correlates to this figure here. And those two numbers multiplied together, it gets you to the 1340. And the same methodology for the greenway, where you can see here, the 3.0.3461. And that gets to the 1,572. So using those methodologies with a revised rate, we would have a single-family detached at 2912, a single-family attached at 1,6969, and a multifamily at 2041. And if approved at this rate, the town estimates, staff estimates that we would have additional revenue of approximately $600,000 to $700,000 annually based on current development trends. So that's about 500 households per year being developed. So if we continued at that rate, that's about the amount of money that we would be generating annually in addition. And it depends on which type of household would be built to get the exact number. In terms of implementation, we have a schedule here. We would recommend review the draft fee changes with Parks and Rec Advisory Committee in September, have a formal council vote in October, share changes with the development community, and have the implementation date be January 1, 2021. And then the final thing that's important to note is that for all sub, all developments that come in before that date, before the January 1st, 2021, they would be, I guess, grandfathered in and would be subject to the older fees. So it would just be for some middles after the January 1st date that would be subject to the new fees. So it would be a couple of years before we started to see houses likely being, being built that would be subject to these new fees. So it would take a little bit of time before we started to generate additional revenue. But we would obviously have to make this change before we could get, get to that point. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll start on my right down here. Mr. Vance, did you have any?
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger?
Can you go back to the chart? I was, I didn't see that in my packet. So I was curious if that was based off the, this up here, is that based off of what we have, like now, the proportions of what we have for parklands and greenways? Or is the, these values, these calculations, where do those numbers come from?
I believe those are from the consultant's recommendation of where we should be. I believe those are from the consultant's recommendation of where we should be.
Okay.
I'll let Matt confirm that, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, that's right. Recent Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan, that's, that's the target, not the current.
To maintain where we are, or not where we are, but to sort of keep a similar trajectory, right?
Yeah. The parkland, the 10.5 acres per thousand is about where we are now. And they're recommending that we maintain that. So, we have to therefore acquire more land to stay on that pace. The greenway one, we're not, not meeting that threshold yet. And they are recommending that we move in that direction.
Okay. Understand. Back to the timeline. So, do Parks and Rec in September vote in October? And why would we wait so long to implement it?
That would be giving us staff time to share the information with the development community. Based on prior experience, I think that was deemed to be a wise decision to give them some time to, not necessarily comment, because it would be a decision, but to, to understand that the changes were going to be made.
Typical process, anytime we change development fees, what we've done in the past is let the development community know. Just kind of in the past, I guess, we've had several, you know, focus groups and meetings with the Triangle Community Coalition, made up of builders and developers, and Home Builders Association. So, it's just been typical that before we roll out any significant fee changes, that we, you know, we're not really, like, looking for their approval, but we at least let them know, you know, what's coming.
It's a courtesy thing, at the very least, to, I don't know.
I understand, I understand the courtesy element of it. Also, I feel like sometimes with the public hearings that we do for everything else, we expect the residents to, to just automatically know. We don't do any exceptional outreach to them necessarily to let them know that a development's coming, or that the hearing's happening. I don't know. We're just kind of giving away the town, but that's my only comment.
Okay.
And, and I think we talked about this previously, Mr. Dallinger. And when we did our building fees last year, we, Public Works did it in the summer, and we waited six months before we implemented them. But we did two things a couple of years ago that we did faster than this, and we got our butt burned, not once, but twice. So, that's why we recommend waiting 90 days, because we did something fast, and someone went to the legislature and got legislature approval that we ended up had to pay a whole lot of money for. And we don't want to do that again.
Exactly. I understand it. They'll like it.
Don't argue with that. I don't agree with, I don't argue with it at all. But I'm just saying we got our butt kicked not once, but twice. So, Michael, could you show the fees again, the recommended, the rec, excuse me, the recommended fees again? Because I didn't see it in the agenda package either. I think Damon mentioned it wasn't in his package. I didn't see it either. I didn't have it in my package.
This wasn't in our packet.
The question. Well, I don't know how you're.
Want to see the recommended, the new rates or the...
The UDO here was so long, I almost fell asleep scrolling through that, just trying to find something. The recommended fees that you had for 2,900 or 11, whatever the money, the dollars were. Yes, sir. Thank you. So, this is revised. Okay. So, that's single-family detached.
Should be paid 14.
Well, I don't know how you. It's 17 or 18 in the electronic version, at least the one that I have. Should be right after the PowerPoint. We, we can, we can resend it if, if there's any question. I'm sorry about that. But it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe we missed it in the hard copy version as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, let me ask you a question. Because I know you're doing this formula based on today. And I know that things change, and I know we're in our economic downturn at the time, but we're, in this area, staying somewhat flat. So, we're talking about this in August, and we're going to do it in January. Do we need to add 1% or 2% or 3% to these numbers? I'm just saying. You know, we, we know each, each, each community, you know, in the area, look at them and we leapfrog one another. So, I'm just asking, do we need to, I hate to say the cost of living, because again, what's happening in the economy, but do we need to add a 1% or 2% or 3% to it? I mean, I would add, I would add something more than what it is now, based, but this is August, and we're going to do it for January, and it won't take effect for two years. This is Gray.
There were other localities. I believe Apex included an annual CPI adjustment or something along those lines.
Oh, they did?
I believe that I recall that. I can confirm that, but I'm pretty sure. And others may have done that. And then, obviously, this would be something that we would look at based on a revaluation the next time that, so every, in four years, we would obviously take another look using the similar, similar methodology in terms of calculating the land value. So.
So, if we approve this, you can have, so you're just saying that we will have language in there that will say this will be adjusted from the CPI on an annual basis? Or we could adopt that? Or we could consider that?
We, we were not recommending that, but we could certainly consider that.
Okay.
If you, that's the council's decision.
The only thing I would, I would add is we should probably check with, check with Fred before you make the final motion, just to be sure that that is consistent with the language that says it has to be based on the tax value. And so, we, we know it's consistent with the tax value if we update it every time the revale occurs, because we then have accurate tax records for, for property parcels. I mean, it might very well be reasonable that that's, we could do that on an annual basis, but.
Either annual or semi-annual. Instead of waiting four years, I think we should at least look at every, you know, halfway in between. But that's just a thought, because looking at what, where are the current, the current fees again, Michael? Yes. So, we're uh, single-family detached is up, and multifamily, I mean, you're talking, you know, significant increases, which are long needed. So, and, and we haven't updated them, what we say, seven or eight years?
A while. I would have to go back and look. I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, when you're more than doubling on this, you're way behind. So, I appreciate you putting this together. And also, if y'all would look into that about updating it, at least, about at least every other year, every two years, if, if it's allowed.
I think that type of adjustment, and then the readjustment, and the reevaluate to make sure it's still on target and not outpacing, is probably, we need to get some kind of wording in there like that. Is your recommendation to do the number that you presented? Or is that just to show us based on the calculation you did?
That, that's the recommendation, is to go with those figures. But we could certainly apply, depending on legal counsel's direction, a CPI or something, if that was the direction of counsel. But based on, we wanted to be a more, based on a methodology that we could defend. And since this is what we, the numbers we came out with, I think it would be prudent to, to go with those numbers.
And you said that Wake Forest, Holly Springs, and Apex had done this very recently, right?
Yeah. Wake Forest hired a consultant to do theirs not that long ago. Holly Springs, I believe, was changing it again, but had done it fairly recently. And Apex had, I believe, done it fairly recently as well.
Just, it's interesting looking at the difference in land values, looking at Holly Springs and Apex, and they're so close to one another. That's, that's a heck of a, that's a heck of a lot of difference on single-family attached and detached and so forth. That's a, that's a big difference in footy based on land value.
I'm sure you can be creative, but it's also possible just different methodologies or different times of updating it.
Okay. Yeah. That's, that's a lot of difference. Thank you.
Sir, let me see. What are you asking us to do tonight, Michael? Is?
Just approve the, I guess, conceptual piece, and then the timeline. And then, we could go forward to Parks Advisory Committee, come back with a formal recommendation in the October meeting, and then go from there in terms of working with the development community to make sure they understand the changes.
Okay.
Does this need to be made in a formal motion? Or just a thumbs up?
Just thumbs up.
Thumbs up is just, is going to be.
Put that on the beginning of October. If it's going through Parks and Rec, and we got another work session in between there, too, if there were any feedback.
I think the 20, I think the Parks and Rec meeting is the 21st of September. So, I think that would give us enough time to turn it around and get it on the first October agenda.
If we can, if it's.
If we can. I think we'll at least keep flexibility there in case other things come up that would hinder that schedule, but.
Are we going to look at this, like Gray brought up, maybe every other year? Is that a game plan on this, just to make sure I understood it correctly?
They're going to see what the statute allows, what the statute, how, let the attorney look at and see what, what we are allowed to do.
And I think our, our intention is to come up with a methodology where it would just get updated as part of the budget routinely. So, whether that's every four years on the revale cycle, or whether we can do an interim two-year adjustment, but that we would get your agreement that, let's say, we, you know, after two years, we do a CPI calculation and add it. But that would just become part of the, the budget that you approve each year, is that the fee would go up per that methodology on that schedule, just boom, 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 you know?
I like that two-year versus, and it's something else to make that figure even larger, every two years, that with growth, what's going on in our community and what have you, gives a chance to look at it. I will, I will see a little bit more than a four-year window or something like that. I think would be, I think we'd be better off with that. Whether we do anything, you know, that's one thing, but at least review it, look at it again every other year. I think we'd be, we'd be ahead of the game with all the growth we've got coming in Garner.
Yeah. I think it is our intention to try to do a better job with that on an annual basis with the budget anyways, just with all the different fees that we have. That's something I'm hoping to do, is just kind of do the, the benchmarking that we did this year, and just make sure we stay in line, given how, how much things can change in a quick, pretty quick way.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I just want to again thank Matt. He was actually the one that put together the spreadsheet, or the, the formal calculation and variety of other staff that helped out with this. It was definitely a team effort.
Question here.
And everybody understands that, like you're saying, it'll be two years before we really start seeing this, because with the development schedule, and this is paid at building permit stage. So, by the time they get the development and develop the property, the parcel, and start getting building permits, takes a while. So.
Take a little time to catch up with the process. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Item, item three, 2021 holiday schedule. Mr. Dick, did you want to say anything first, or I'll be happy to also pick up on our discussions about any change in that schedule?
Um, I, yeah, that's fine. I'll say a couple of things. Um, we're, in a few minutes, I'll be talking about our agenda process, and how we have agenda meetings and talk about the agenda. And we was talking about the agenda a couple of weeks ago, and the holiday schedule was part of that discussion. And we had some department heads up there. And someone asked about, you know, will there ever be any consideration for Juneteenth being a holiday? And at the time, I said, well, not quite sure, you know? Something we'd have to, you know, see what the council's desire is. So, talked to the mayor about it. And I guess he's done some, some research and, and, you know, got himself up to speed on it, and history of it, and what it means, and those type of things. So.
Yeah. And I think I mentioned this to council, maybe in my comments, either at the last meeting or the previous one. But, um, Juneteenth, I won't try to give you a historical background unless you, unless you want me to. Obviously, I went online. And this, this dates back to the emancipation of the slaves back in 1863. And then, the state of Texas actually was the first state that named this as a state holiday. That was back in 1980. And then, in June of this year, actually, Virginia and New York have declared it as a state-paid holiday. Those, I think, are the only states who've done that so far. But others are considering that. And it's my understanding that in our county, Wake County has adopted that as a, as a formal celebration holiday. And I believe the city of Raleigh and also Apex. I'm not aware of any other towns in Wake County who've done that. I think there, there have been some discussions about other things that could occur as, as opposed to granting a holiday. I think Wake Forest has some special commemoration and so forth that they're doing around that. And so, I think it's only appropriate for this council to at least give it some consideration. Everything from, I guess, a holiday to, to commemorations and helping our citizens to better understand the significance of that, of that day in our history, and ways to properly recognize and commemorate it. I have thought that if, if, if council is not yet inclined to, to particularly declare what you'd prefer to do, if anything, that as mayor, I could consider, I guess, appointing a committee that would probably involve at least one council member to, to study and look at this, and maybe bring back a recommendation as to an appropriate form of, of recognition. And I'd be willing to do that if the council so chooses. But I did want to give the council an opportunity to, to weigh in on this as we're getting ready to approve the, the holiday for, for 2021. So.
What's North Carolina, state of North Carolina doing on this?
I'm not aware that they have taken any action yet. I haven't heard anything either from the governor's office or the legislature. The information I looked at indicated that, of course, more and more states are looking at it and considering it. But the, the three states that I mentioned, I believe, are the ones that apparently up until now. And of course, like you said, the last two approved it this year. I think appropriately so with many of the issues that are going on in our, in our country today as relates to racial injustice and items related to that. But suffice it to say that I was one of the ones who had heard of Juneteenth, but I had not really pursued the understanding and meaning behind it. And obviously, for, for, for many of our citizens, they certainly do understand the significance of it. And perhaps there are even some, some commemoration that, that go on unofficially that I'm not even aware of. But obviously, some other places in our county are. And I don't know yet when the state of North Carolina may, may take that up as, as an item.
So, you said, Ken, that mayor, I'm sorry, that the county is going ahead and adopting it as a holiday starting next year?
I believe it is.
Yes.
To go in effect next year. I didn't actually confirm that. But yeah, I believe that's the case.
Okay. And just, I just ask as a curiosity question. When, when the state adopted, officially adopted the Martin Luther King holiday, is a holiday in January of so many years ago, they took a holiday away. I mean, they swapped holidays. Easter, Good Friday, it used to be Good Friday and Easter Monday. They took away that. I didn't know, is the county doing that, or are they just adding a holiday? I don't, I'm just asking, got a curiosity, because the last time I know when this happened is with MLK Day. They, the state chose not to have, no longer have Easter Monday.
Okay. I'd wondered about that. I didn't remember that, because when I worked for the federal government, of course, they didn't recognize that as a religious holiday. So, they didn't give Easter. But.
But the federal government recognizes the Columbus Day. We don't even know if he discovered America. But that's, I still haven't figured that one out. But anyway, that's another story.
That's right. Yeah. We won't get into that. No, I'm, I, I cannot say just absolutely with certainty, but I am not aware of any discussions. I've heard of any swapping of holidays there. I think it's granted as a new.
If you take any input, if it's going to be, I'd like to wait and see what state of North Carolina is going to do. I'm very familiar with this, this, what we're discussing here. And the interim have, you know, I like the commemorative, commemorative type things where, you know, the education process. But I like to wait and see what state, if it's going to be a state holiday, I like to wait and let the state see what we're going to do. It's easier to go along with what they do than, than just have another paid holiday here and not necessarily state holiday. And Gray brings up a good point. How does that, are they going to swap a holiday? Or what's, what's the deal there? And so, I understand commemorating, but I personally like to wait and see what state's going to do.
Well, yeah. And, and, and I don't have any idea at this point what they're going to do, one way or the other. Obviously, as I said, some, some municipalities have decided to, on their own volition, to go ahead and, and recognize in certain ways. And like I said, the two that I'm aware of, the three that I'm aware of, that I think are granting it as holidays, are the three I mentioned here. But.
And that was Wake Forest and?
No, no. Well, Raleigh and Apex, as I understand it, are the two municipalities that are, that are recognizing it as a holiday. I think Wake Forest is, is not at this point recognizing as a holiday, but they do have some type of commemorative events to, to keep the public informed, and to allow people to participate in activities around that day to celebrate it.
Okay.
But that's my understanding. Does that sound right, Mr. Manager, in terms of any conversation you've had with Wake Forest?
There may be some others. I just don't have the list.
Yeah. Okay. So, any other council members care to?
But the list, the state holiday schedule in your agenda packet is what is currently the state holidays?
Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, it's not included. Yeah. Yeah, obviously, it's not included at this point.
Question, do we have any idea when the state may or may not adopt that as a holiday? If we're going to wait to hear what the state's going to do, are we going to say until or unless X amount of time passes and they haven't made a decision and we'll revisit it?
The council could certainly do that, and again, if, if, if I had any inside sources or knew whether or not the state is, is even come up for discussion, I'd like to think so, but yeah, I, you know, we could say, if you want to follow the state's lead on this, if, if the state has not taken some specific action regarding this within the next calendar year, we could certainly come back as a item that the, the town could, could consider.
I would like, like to offer that we do set a point, a date certain for when we would look at it if the state has not done anything.
Right. And, and let me just say, and I'll try not to confuse it too, but in my view, even, even if at this point, we, we chose to follow the state's lead and there was not a holiday granted, I think there's still merit, and I don't have all the solutions to that, but there's still merit in us as a town seeking to do, to inform our citizens more of the significance of the day, and perhaps recognizing in some way some commemorative events of some type. I think that would be worthwhile to do, even if we don't do a holiday.
I could support that.
Yeah.
I could support that, Mr. Mayor.
I would guess that the legislature probably won't take this up until the new legislature meets next year. My, it's my guess. I don't think that's going to happen between now and.
Probably right.
Just taking, taking a wild guess there, but I would expect the new legislature would address it one way or the other.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, it was kind of low on this end. May I ask what's being considered here? I heard something, a nod of his, about possible direction.
Okay.
I just want to get clarity on what was said as a possible direction.
Okay, so, so, so at this point, in terms of this council or our town recognizing Juneteenth, a recommendation has been made that we follow the lead of the state of North Carolina, and, and at this point, that means waiting to see if the state legislature, thinking it would have to come from them, is going to take any action to declare it as a holiday before we act. But I guess you did hear the discussion about the, the municipalities thus far who have, who have taken action on that, okay?
Wake Forest, no, Raleigh and Apex, read about that one.
Yes, yes. And so.
Wake Forest has not, Wake Forest has not made it a holiday. They celebrate, they did a celebration surrounding it, but not, not declared it a holiday yet.
So, and so I think, I think I said this, maybe I didn't have my, that the recommendation was to follow the state's lead on this, and then I think Mayor Protem Behringer said, well, you know, if, if the state doesn't take action, say during this, this calendar year, you could say budget year, then we ought to come back to it essentially 12 months from now, maybe before then, to consider if we want to take action on our own in regards to how we'd like to, to acknowledge and celebrate this. And of course, Mr. Singleton noted that he was doubtful that the legislature coming back into session, when do they come back very, this, this year?
They're kind of finished this year.
I think they are. Is next year a short session?
No, next year's a long session.
Okay, long session.
A new, a legged assembly.
Might be a greater chance of getting considered in the long session as opposed to the short session, I think. So, so sort of what's before us right now is a proposal not to take action at this time, but to see what the state is going to do, and then come back and review it after this, we, we determine if, anything, if the state's done about this. Could you hear me okay?
Yes, I heard you okay. I'm thinking now, in reference to the state taking action, suppose the state hasn't even thought about taking action?
And that's certainly a possibility. I, I, I'm not privy to any legislators or others. Of course, I guess we could, you know, that, that'd be a good thing for us to ask Mr. Bridges to inquire about. He's, he spends some time at the legislature and acts on our behalf, so we could ask him to see what he could find out about any, if there's any momentum on this issue.
We also might want to consider if we're going to adopt, if we are going to adopt it. It'll be in June of next year, so may, we may want to say by the end of the first quarter next year that we will revisit it regarding whether or not the state has done anything, and then decide what we want to do. Because if we're going to implement it for next year, we've got to have time to get ready for it.
Yeah. Well, obviously, we're getting ready to approve the calendar for next year, tonight potentially, and obviously, it's not on there now, but we could go back.
You can amend, you can amend the calendar.
I know, I know. I'm just saying that tonight is an opportunity, but yeah, we can certainly go back and, and consider that. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
I have a question and a, a comment, because I thought a lot about this. I'm not completely clear on the rationale of waiting for the state. If your initial thought is to adopt a holiday because it reflects the values of the community, I'm not sure why we would wait for the state to make that determination for Garner. It doesn't seem particularly proactive. I, I wrote, I had some thoughts on this, because, and I guess my other question is, were we looking to just add a flat-out holiday and not remove another, but just add another day? Is that the recommendation?
That was the way it was proposed, not to necessarily eliminate a holiday, but to add a holiday.
Right.
Let me, I wrote some thoughts. Would the council indulge my thoughts on this?
I believe so. I'll recognize you to do that.
Thank you. I just wrote that we have a lot of holidays that observe a lot of different things. We honor our veterans, we honor those who've fallen, we honor the sacrifices of the labor movement, we honor friendship and Thanksgiving, we celebrate the birth and resurrection of Jesus Christ, and we celebrate presidents, and we observe with humility and reverence the independence of our nation. But the reality is that Independence Day doesn't mark freedom for all people. Only, it was only a first necessary step. We don't have a holiday that celebrates the freedom won through the Civil War, a victory that transformed by law of the land, living, breathing human beings from property to be owned into free people, literally unshackled, and also figuratively unshackled, for they know how to say in their future, and the hope that their children and descendants would never know what it meant to belong to another human being, like a dog. We're worse than a dog, like a piece of machinery that sweats and bleeds and cries and hopes and dreams. It's often said that you cannot rewrite history, but we have an obligation to write the right history and remember what has been forgotten, and discover what's been hidden. No, we cannot rewrite history, but there's clearly more to write and so much to learn. And I feel like this is one of those opportunities. Not everyone has to observe it. They can get the day off, they don't have to observe the other holidays, but I think it's, it's an important recognition of sacrifice and freedom. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Well-meant and elegant words, and I agree with you. As a, as a son of the South, many of us are, I think our knowledge of, of some of these histories and, and things we've overlooked in the past are coming full circle, and it has certainly caused me to rethink some things. Let me say it that way. So, thank you for sharing that, okay. At this point, if council is not ready, well, I guess you've, you've indicated what you think is the best thing to do at this point in time. I would urge you, if we are going to take the position that we will, I know we have followed the, obviously, the lead of the state, and that's where we get our guidance, but nothing requires that, but I would urge this council to, as I guess Ms. Behringer stated, to see if, if no action is taken. I think it would be well for us to come back around to that and make our own decision, notwithstanding what the state does, does or doesn't do.
But, Mr. Mayor, at, at the beginning of the discussion, it was mentioned about possibly appointing a committee to look into Juneteenth. That may be something that will be well to develop at this particular time, to have a committee to look into Juneteenth and, and what can be possibly done, and, and, and come back and report to the council their findings from their study, and provide possibly courses of action, recommendations to us to, to help us in our decision-making process.
Okay. And, yeah, I'd be happy to hear from council further. From the standpoint of the, of the mayor's position, if I were appointing a committee, I'd be inclined probably to appoint at least maybe one council member. We don't need a large committee, and certainly a staff member, or, or designee of the manager's office if he wants to serve, and then perhaps at least a citizen or two.
Let me catch up. I'm trying to figure out what a committee is going to do, if you're going to pick a day or not pick a day. I don't, I don't, this is, if you want to pick it and make it a holiday, that's fine, but we have enough holidays right now that people don't give a flying flip about what it's about. And unless you can do something and plan an event that day to let people know what you're doing, in many ways, you're wasting your time. So many people, Memorial Day, that's the weekend to go to the beach. They don't know what Memorial Day is. You've been to the Memorial Day event, as many of us have up here. How many people show up? 100, 120 people, 30 people, sadly? Independence Day, some people, I think, kind of get that one more than others. Labor Day, most people, that's the kind of last weekend at the beach. Woo, let's go. Veterans Day, how many people really know what Veterans Day is for? So if you're going to have it, MLK, you have the MLK event, which is good. I would recommend if we're going to consider doing this, whether it's a holiday, or you do something like Wake Forest to recognize it, that's a much better way, in my opinion, of letting people know what that day means than just having a holiday. Because just having a holiday, like with the federal government, Columbus Day, how many people go out and say, and fly a Christopher Columbus flag in their front yard? I don't think too many people do that. So the, the holiday, just having a holiday, unless you're going to educate people about what Juneteenth, what it recognizes and what it's for, then basically, you're just having a holiday to have a holiday. I mean, I hate to be that blunt about it, not, not, not knocking the significance at all. That's like Easter Monday got taken away because the, the state or the feds or whatever didn't recognize it. The town, I mean, excuse me, the state of North Carolina always recognized it. So if you can do it, that's how I would say, if you got a committee together, then that's how to look at what you can do to have some type of event or ceremony marking what it actually is for, than just having a holiday and say, hey, you got a day off. Because just having a day off, again, kids nowadays, a lot of people don't know what Good Friday's for, but Memorial Day, they don't know, or Labor Day, or Veterans Day, they don't know what it's about, really. And you have so many different religions and faiths in this country nowadays. Good Friday is for Christians, basically, and, but think how many other faiths there are that don't recognize that, or Easter Monday, or any day like that. So if you want to do it, then do it so it has some significance where people can actually have the opportunity. And we, we all know, you won't have a huge crowd, but you'll have people there and give them the opportunity to learn what it's about. And with our communications team taping it, it'll be on, on the website and be on the channel. That's to me what I think a way to talk about the significance of what the day means, because it is significant, and I'm all in favor of doing that.
I agree, because I think, and I think the town, for all these holidays you're talking about, the town does a good job of doing events for them. And so, your point is well taken.
We do, we recognize Memorial, we, the town does something for Memorial, Independence, and Veterans Day, and Martin Luther King. So we hit half the ones on here. Christmas is each night, Thanksgiving is each night, New Year's Day is each night. So the town hits all of them, really, except we don't have a Labor Day event. I'm not suggesting we have one.
Well, yeah, to your point, Mr. Singleton, yeah, my, my thinking was, when we were talking about appointing a committee, was that to, to task that committee with some thoughts about how is a good and proper way to have our citizens understand the significance of it, and to think of, make some recommendations as a proper way to celebrate it. I wouldn't eliminate the fact that you might have a holiday, but that certainly doesn't, doesn't mean that you would automatically say, let's have a holiday and that'll be it.
I have an update from Mr. Bridges, since he's texting me. I only may text the one he got.
Maybe he is.
One, my brief search of the pending, excuse me, hold a second, let me get on here. My brief search of the pending bills is at this time, there shows to make, excuse me, shows no pending bill to make Juneteenth a state holiday as of this time. However, there is a pending bill HB 838 to make Election Day a paid holiday. I think that's going to happen from the federal level. I think we're going to see that, so. But he said there's nothing at this time, but there is one about the Election Day.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, I think Ms. Singleton raised a very good point. I understand Damon's passion, and I would agree with that. And I think it's going to be an education process, and I think if we could put this thing together like this, we're to be in education, especially for all the young people that don't know. They might know more than adults right now. Who knows this day and time? But I think that would be a great way to approach this, and initially, then see where it goes from there, and, because it's going to be an education process. And he's right. I'm a veteran, and I go to veteran things, and people out there, out in the middle of the lake, nobody cares, and I'm thinking, and I was talking about it on my radio show this morning, you know, all the freedoms we got in voting, that veterans paid their life for, for this all through the years, and, and families are still suffering, so, but people don't understand what it is. They really don't. You can ask 100 people on the street, and one or two might give you an answer for it. And I do understand your passion, that was well put, and I think we would be well served to put together a program like Greg was talking about, and, and with some programs, or however you want, the, that committee could put it together and make a big awareness of what it truly is, so, so the public can know, because they don't.
Okay, does staff care to weigh in at all? I'm not saying you should, but I know you've got plenty to do, but I, I mean, if I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, I think the council is, is agreeable to maybe me appointing a committee of, of three or four, maybe five people.
Yeah, and staff's committed to working with, you know, the committee and the community on commemorating the day, and, you know, whatever activities are surrounded around it.
And while the date's significant, you know, education is like Veterans Day. How many people know how it's on the, you know, 11th day, the 11th, the 11th day of the 11th month, the 11th hours from World War I surrender? So many people, so many younger people don't know that nowadays. We're older, and we know it, but so many younger people, that's not really being focused on in history nowadays.
Okay, I think I'm hearing correctly. I will, I will talk further with the town manager and others, and, and somebody I will ask on this council to, to serve on that, obviously, and we will, we'll put some parameters around that and expect to get a report back and bring it back to council. I won't set a specific deadline on that just yet, but we'll certainly bring it back and have you consider it then. Okay, are we together on that? Okay.
So for now, we could put the state holiday on the next agenda, on the consent agenda, next regular meeting?
I believe so, yes. Okay, was that all on that now for now, Mr. Manager? Okay. You're, you're still up, aren't you? Item four?
For the next item? Should I do it from here or there? Which is better for Rick, I wonder?
Probably up there.
Yeah, probably there.
Right, mayor, town council, over the last few months, there's been some discussion about, well, I shouldn't say just the last few months, maybe even longer, about the timing of the agenda, the timing of, you know, when council gets this information for the meetings that they need to prepare, and some, there has been some discussion about, are there ways to get the information to you sooner, so that you have more time before the next meeting to review it? And so I thought the best way to start that conversation is to kind of give you an overview of how we prepare the agenda and the timeline and what it takes, and to go from there. I don't know I don't know if y'all have a full understanding of what it takes to put an agenda together as far as just getting items on the agenda and the material that has to be compiled and the printing or the compiling it electronically and getting it out. So just wanted to give you an overview. So the goal of the agenda is primarily to make sure council has information it needs to make decisions. So we try to put the information that you're going to need to properly discuss items in the meetings, and also so they can be posted for the public, so they'll have the information so council can have it also. You receive the information far enough in advance so you can read it, that is one of the goals. Typically, you get items on Thursday for a meeting that's going to occur the next week, either on that Monday or Tuesday. But also have to make consideration that staff needs time to prepare high-quality materials.
Do you want it to be up there?
Oh, oh, okay. I forgot all about that.
Yeah.
Been a while. Which, I didn't load it, so which one is already up here? Okay. All right, so just making sure that you get the items on time and that staff has time to prepare and get all that information. And then after that, we get the information, we pass it on to the clerk, and the clerk has to have time to prepare it and compile it and put it into a format that's presentable. And then the other thing that's to be considered is deadlines. Some things have deadlines, and so that dictates when things come to the agenda and how long it may take to prepare. A lot of times, we're getting things from external developers or partner agencies, like the transit system, Go Raleigh or something like that, or the city of Raleigh. So a lot of times, we're just trying to meet deadlines. And then also, like I said, we want to make sure the public has information, so. All those things play into the goals of putting the agenda together. When we looked at other towns, the town clerk, Ms. Gibson, did a survey, saw a survey on the clerk's listserv, and there were fourteen responses. A lot of jurisdictions kind of our size usually have council meetings on Mondays or Tuesdays. They provide, two of them provide materials the Wednesday before the meeting, eight provide materials the Thursday before the meeting, just like Garner, and then four provide materials the Friday before the meeting. So fairly consistent in just those few respondents there. So the way the current process works, and there's a calendar in here also, I'll go through in a few minutes, but just to walk you through it, staff submit agenda items, and sometimes agenda items may come from council, may come from things that are already pre-scheduled to come to council, meetings like development hearings and those type of things. Some may be impromptu. But the clerk's office prepares a draft agenda for staff discussion. We have an agenda meeting, and we look at the agenda and discuss it, and some things get moved around, depending on how busy that meeting looks. We're trying to load or manage to load. Some things, if they're not ready, you know, they might get moved off and delayed to another meeting, but that's the purpose of the agenda meeting. So after that, we make changes. And during that time, we're putting information together. Each department is putting their information together and getting it prepared to turn over to the town clerk. And once the clerk gets it, the clerk makes edits and formats it using PDF. So she gets, the clerk's office gets a lot of pieces, and then she compiles them all together and makes them into one document. And then after that, the clerk prints a copy and hands it over to the town manager's office. So me, Matt, and John, we all look at it and review it for content, you know, we're looking for mistakes, content, and just, you know, just making sure all the information's there and those type of things.
Rodney, if I could ask a question? Is this information that you're showing supposed to be in our agenda packet?
Yes.
Mine is at the very, very end. You get to go through.
It says it's on page twenty-two, but it is not.
No, that's, that's, twenty-two is after the whole UDO stuff's in there. I mean, the whole, that's a big gap.
I think.
It's the green PowerPoint?
Three hundred and sixty.
Page three hundred and sixty.
Get to the very, go to the very bottom, and it pops up.
Lord have mercy, okay.
What he's showing right, or what he was showing was page three sixty-two.
Okay.
If you have a hard time going to sleep at night, just pull that UDO out and start reading two or three pages. You'll knock it right on out. It won't take long.
Page twenty-two in the.
Because it may be in the printed copy, because we didn't print the full document, because it was as thick as that notebook on my table there. So it's twenty-two of the regular agenda, not including the.
Twenty-two is not the agenda at all.
It's gone all the way to the end.
I know, I know, but page twenty-two is not the agenda process at all.
Right, but.
I think it originally was before the big content from one sixty D was added.
Okay.
Yeah, it was this, this size before one sixty D was added. So it's page twenty-two of this.
And Ms. Behringer's right, on the page numbers in here, the last page says, it says page three sixty-six on our electronic, it's three sixty-seven, but it's, she's right, twenty-two is not listed as a page.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, here was a, so basically, you know, we get all the information together, give it to the clerk, the clerk compiles it, hands it over to a town manager's office for review. We give it back to the clerk to make edits, and then it's merged into a single document and then post it on the website, social media, as well as transmit it to council for electronic, electronic retrieval, or at times, depending on what it is, we'll deliver a hard copy. All right, looking at that on a calendar, I'm going to walk you through, for example, the August meeting. So primarily going to look at August meetings, but we are preparing information in July, so that's why you have July up there also. So in order to get something together for the August third meeting, the meetings, council meetings are in red. We start that process back, as far back as the two weeks prior, and that's in the brown. And we start planning items and getting items together, and, and then it's due, we have an agenda meeting, prep meeting, the Monday before the council meeting. So let me, let me back up here. So for the, for the August third meeting, we have an agenda prep meeting on the twenty-seventh, Monday the twenty-seventh, we would have had an agenda prep meeting. And that's where I said, staff kind of sits down and looks at what's going to be on the agenda, and then we may remove things, we may add things, and those type of things. And then we have, we have another till the thirty-first to get things together for the Let me, let me make sure, I know this is confusing. I know what it is, but articulating it with all these different colors is kind of confusing. All right, so for the meeting on the, on August the third, we have an agenda prep meeting on the twenty-seventh. We meet as a staff, anyone that may have something, and we prepare it and get it together during the week, and we have to have it to, we have to have it to the clerk's office by the twenty-ninth and have time to review it so you could get it on the Thursday before. What's that? Go ahead.
And we actually have another meeting even earlier than that.
Okay. For the third, we have, are you talking about the twentieth?
Yeah, that's. Sorry if I'm throwing you off. Go ahead.
No, 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 I'm. All right, bear with me for one moment here.
Okay, we're going over.
Yeah, kind of.
Bottom line of the thing, we get it Thursday before the meeting, and y'all do what you got to do prior to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the bottom line, but I'm trying to walk you through an actual scenario. You know, I've gotten thrown off here. But for Monday, a meeting, the first Monday of the month on August the third, we would have started, we would have had an agenda meeting, our first agenda meeting, to discuss that meeting on the.
You're right, you're right.
Twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Yeah. And at that time, we go over it, like I said, and then the clerk, she typically wants things by that Wednesday, no later than that Wednesday, and sometimes on Tuesday, depending on how the week falls. So she could put it together, a draft document for the manager's office to review. And then that will go out on Thursday the thirtieth, and you will have a couple of days plus the weekend to review it before the meeting on Monday. That Monday morning of the meeting, we'll have another agenda prep meeting where we go over what's going to be on that meeting for that night. Or if it was a Tuesday meeting, we would still have it on that Monday, but, and we just go over what the items are, any complications. Sometimes we'll reorder things, like we have consultants coming in, we might put them first if we're, if they're, if we're paying them to be there, we might put them first. We may order, we may reorder things, just taking things under consideration, depending on what it is. Okay, now, backing up, that's for a typical item, so backing up to a development-type On the twentieth of July is the planning commission meeting. Jeff or John can help me with this if you need to. That's the planning commission meeting. Once something goes to planning commission, it's typically going to come back to council that first meeting in the next month. So the items on the twentieth that got reviewed on the twentieth are going to come to council on the third? Is that, that's correct, right? That quick?
So that brown line is showing you the processing time, that planning is working on items to make sure that they're, they're ready. So your brown line is the planning track.
Yeah, that's, that's where I got confused.
For planning items.
That's right. Yeah, that's where I got confused. Planning, I was thinking, planning.
Preplanning, yeah.
Small P, planning, preplanning, not planning department. So that's where, yeah, that's where I got off track. So yeah, so then the planning department is spending time in the brown, preparing their items, and then getting it ready, ready for the meeting on that first Monday. And I've probably done a terrible job of explaining this and got everybody confused. Is anything y'all want to add?
Thursday before the meeting happened to us.
Yeah. I think the point I'm trying to make, and if you look at, if you look at August and you look at the full month of August, by the time we prepare something for a meeting and we have that meeting, we, we pretty much got to turn right back around and start preparing some new stuff for the next meeting. Because council has three meetings per month, it just, it puts a, a lot of times, a tremendous load on staff to try to turn things around in a timely manner. And we're trying to look at whether there's any, any ways to kind of back the process up for some of these items, or can we automate some, some of the processes, some of the steps a little more to try to get it to you sooner? So for example, after tonight, we won't have another meeting for another two weeks. But sometimes, right after we have the work session, we have another meeting the very next week. You know, some months, depending on how the weeks fall, we could be having the first council meeting next week. So it doesn't always give us a lot of time in between. So instead of going by the graph, I just need to talk from experience. We don't always have time in between to queue up the next item and get it ready. And if it's a large item, like you see as big as this notebook is, or something that's really complicated, it takes a lot of research and data, or a lot of times, we're pulling things from outside sources, and we have to compile that and try to get it to you in a timely fashion. And we don't always get it when we want it, you know, we're on other people's schedule. So, so basically, that's what I'm trying to, trying to portray here in the graph, is that there's not a lot of time to turn things around, so.
May I ask a question? Not of Rodney, but of Mr. Matthews. You served on the county commissioners, and how much in advance of meeting did you get your agendas?
Far as the county commissioners is concerned, what would happen is the chairman of the county commissioners, and typically the vice chairman, and one other, it could be anybody else that wanted to be there, but as a minimum, the chairman, the vice chairman would sit down with the county manager on a typical, it'd be like, for example, a Monday morning, and go over the agenda for the following week, and go down each item by item. We could add, we could take it away. But we met weekly doing that, just to make sure we stayed on top of things. And not that I'm encouraging that, because, I mean, the mayor, you'd be here all the time. But, but at a county level, there were so many things, we had to do it that way. It was a part-time, full-time job.
So you met on Monday, not for the week coming, that same week, but for the following?
For the following, right.
Okay.
Now, they might have changed that since then, I don't know. But, but we did meet weekly. We had to stay on top of it. Some things went pretty quick, some things took a long time, and if another council member, commissioner member wanted something on that, they'd contact the chair or the vice chair to get it put on.
No matter what, it takes a long time.
Yep. Not an easy way to do it, and the bigger the organization, the more time it takes. And, you know, first, I'm thinking back in the Alderman days, Greg, you can probably tell me what it is. It seemed like back then, we had two meetings a month and occasionally a work session if needed.
Right.
And that's, but that goes to show what growth does to you now. But back in the day, when I had hair, that's the way it was.
Well, the work session also, you know, used to be on Monday, and then we changed it to Tuesday, because when Sam became mayor, he had civitan meeting, and somebody else had civitan, I forgot. So we changed it to Tuesday, and then a few years ago, we changed it from seven o'clock to six o'clock, because some of the items were more free talk in that portion, and may, may take more time talking. So we did change those to six, because we could get out a little bit earlier. So, you know, the Tuesday is always the one that's the kicker, is, well, when's your Tuesday meeting? It's the meeting after the third Monday. And then the work session is the last Tuesday of the month. And like Rodney said, if, you know, next week, the first is on, excuse me, September first is on a Tuesday, but that's, you know, if it'd been on Monday, you know, we'd give you next month.
Turn it right back around.
So it's an unusual turnaround, but, you know, something to consider, and I'll just throw this out there, and I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying something to consider. To give yourself an extra day on the first month, you can make the first meeting a Tuesday, not a Monday. I'm not advocating for that, I'm just saying. Give everybody the same amount of time, same amount of days. I'm just throwing that, I'm just, that's something to think about. I'm not advocating for it, I'm just mentioning it. I'm not advocating for it, I'm just mentioning it, in case you wanna have them all on the same day.
The first of the month meeting, make out a Tuesday.
I just threw it out there, because that gives you the extra day, because that's usually a very busy meeting, and staff's tied up with a lot of things on that Monday, and we got a meeting, I'm just suggesting, and that gives you an extra day on the agenda, but I'm just throwing that out there, if you wanna think about something, to gain an extra day. I don't think, I don't think we can back staff up, you know, with more time, because you get that agenda, one day less than you get the other two agendas, because it's on Monday and not Tuesday.
I would agree with that, Mr. Mayor, because that gives them an extra day.
I'm not gonna say I'm advocating for it, I just suggest it, if you want an extra day. And it may work to help staff, actually, because that's how I understand the meeting on Tuesday, the second, after the third Tuesday, because it used to be on Monday out there, because staff has, this is before my time, because that explained to me that Tuesday. It's because it used to be on a Monday, and they did it because it gave staff a break, because things that were public hearings in the first meeting, it gave them an extra day on that Monday to talk about on that Tuesday.
Two, two, two things I would say, I wouldn't necessarily disagree, but, of course, Gray, when you say they, they gain a day, actually, they, they lose a day in terms of the, the time to prepare for the second meeting, right? If you, if you move it Tuesday, and that, that's quibbling a little bit, but.
But you, but you automatically have two weeks before the first meeting and the second meeting. Sometimes you have work sessions that are back-to-back.
That's true.
So it gives them another day. I'm just thinking that loud.
Yeah, that's not, that's not, that's not the hard.
Right, it's the other one, yeah, so losing a day there, or at least, yeah. And, and I, I attended some of these preparatory meetings when I first became mayor, and I haven't attended one more recently, because I haven't gotten here timely, I guess, but they, they are, they are active in a lot of discussion, and everybody's trying to be sensitive to timelines and keeping things orderly, and, you know, if you delay something now, or put it off, then that just sort of puts you in a, kind of a backup position, where, you know, if you gotta try to add it on, then it's, it's challenging. So I think they, they're trying to do a good job of keeping, keeping things on track. But to your point, that's not something we've, I've discussed with staff, but I, I think if this council has flexibility, if, if staff feels as though that, that, that would help, at least during that particular meeting cycle, and that's something we could.
It's just gonna get busier, I think we are seeing that from just very few short years ago, and, and it's gonna get busier with the growth we got coming in, the developments and the, and the corporate side of it, and having to deal with issues, and it's gonna double down on you guys out there, most certainly, and if there's a way we could give you that extra day, you guys need, I guess, to Gray and the mayor's point, you need to give us some feedback, if that's, if that will truly help you guys.
We'll go back and talk to staff about that, and whether that.
Because it don't matter to me, because, you know, if it's one, this day or the next day, as far as I'm concerned, because you gotta be here.
I wouldn't rush into doing it, but if you think it might help everyone, then that's something to consider. If you don't think it can help everyone, then just say, hey, that's not helping, so that's something to consider.
So, I mean, I think, in the conversations that I've had, and I think we've had, there's a, a process issue with the agenda itself. If you go back two slides to this process, there's no council involvement in the creation of the agenda at all, and the reality is, based on even our town ordinances in any board, it's a governing board of anything, that board owns that agenda, it's their agenda, and then they create the process to get that agenda before it, and to staff, and work with staff. If you look at our own ordinances, section two point, two five, introducing, sponsoring, presenting ordinances and resolutions. All ordinances, resolutions, and other matters or subjects requiring town action, requiring action by the town council must be introduced and sponsored by a member of council, except that the town clerk and the town attorney may present ordinances, resolution, and other matters or subjects to council. Any council members may assume sponsorship, so then it comes before us, and we vote on it. My proposal would be, because what we need is, we need better insight and headlights as to what's coming. My proposal would be that at every work session, we, like we are here today, every single work session, we sit with staff, and you, we all work out what that proposed, the agenda items are for the month ahead, so we know what's coming on the next one, you, you guys have good insights as to what's coming up, we don't. But if we sit in a work session, and there are items that we may wanna put on the agenda, I think one of the things we talked about is the challenge of the timing of that, so if it's gonna be too short of notice, well, this gives opportunity for council, if they have items they wanna put onto the agenda, which again, is the board's, the council's agenda, then you're aware of it, we can see what's coming, and the timelines and all that. The other issue is, you've got things like these public hearings, well, those affect the agenda, the council should have some say on when those public hearings are. There is no provision in our ordinances, and so even in the council procedures, there's a provision for just staff can submit items for the agenda, that's not backed up by our ordinances. My proposal would be that those items go to the town manager, and he works with the clerk to put that draft agenda together, so that every, it doesn't go through the clerk to sort through, it goes through the town manager, who, there's another provision that allows the town manager to be a, a vector for those types of agenda recommendations from the public. But the frustration that I have, and that I see, and where we get tripped up as a council sometimes, is not having the foresight of what's coming on the agenda, and I think if we, at every work session, looked at first council meeting coming up, next one, next work session, we'd have a much better idea of what's coming, and it doesn't change or impede what you all are doing, or when we get them, we just have a better insight as to what's coming. Because some of this stuff, this next one, the hearing notice went out today, got three developments coming up on September third, one of them's the largest the governor's ever seen, and we're supposed to get through that in one night? That didn't even make, I mean, for me, doesn't even make sense, but without council being part of that process to say, you know, we might need to break these up, because these are pretty big projects, but if we had our work session, and we all, we looked at what was coming, and what was suggested for putting these things on the calendar, and, you know, we'll work with you, we know, we don't wanna impede the process, but we also wanna be informed, and when you got three projects, and this one got a couple of weeks till, to have notice of them, I don't even know if we, it comes directly to our email, but, you know, we can't, I can't, the way I operate, get an agenda three or four days before, because then, there's no time for me to even give feedback to you guys outside of the council meeting. Then I'm, that's why we have such long council meetings, because I, I don't have time to get it on a late Thursday, there's one day sometimes, we all working to send my questions and get clarifications, and so that little bit of window would actually speed up a lot of probably council meetings, because they're just more foreknowledge of what's going on, so that, that's sort of my recommendation for formulating the agenda, working in concert with staff during work sessions.
And I know, over the last, well, for about the last two, three months, I know I've been sending council out some of the schedule of what's coming up, so hopefully that helps.
It's been, it's been helpful, but it's also not consistent enough, and then there's not sort of us collaborating to say, well, this is important, you guys telling us what's important, that's always equally important, say, this is something we really, really need to do, and you could set eighty percent of the upcoming agendas with council, and then there are things that come up, you've gotta throw them in there, emergency stuff, short notice stuff, that we can then be flexible with, and that doesn't require a significant investment in technology or a tracking mechanism or anything like that, it's just communication, just being in the loop. Because again, ultimately, the agenda's the, the people's agenda, and that's what we are here to represent, is the people, and so we have to have a better input that's not disruptive to what you all are doing, but we need a better input to have input on the agenda, input, input, input.
But like, if you look, oh, I'm sorry. Now, I was gonna say, like, if you look at tonight's agenda, I mean, like, the U D O, that's something, you know, to keep it on timeline, that we needed to bring to staff, council, so we could keep that, the timeline, so we could meet that deadline, then the update on the fee in lieu of was a request from council that we bring to you, and we had to slot it in when it was appropriate, and we could handle it, and get all the information, and make all the calculations, the holiday schedule, that's one of those routine things, you're gonna pretty much have that on the agenda at the same time every year, and then the, this agenda discussion was another request of council, so we're getting input from all over, and we're trying to manage it and put it all together and bundle it together, and then think about load, and how much.
I think my recommendation helps, because then you're not getting it from all different directions at different times, you know, as we go into a work session, that you're gonna be giving us information, we're gonna be asking a few questions, and we'll be making a few maybe possible recommendations of our own, and it really keeps the disruption factor lower as you all are in the process of that month, making those, those agenda plans.
Well, without, you know, trying to oversimplify maybe what you're proposing, Mr. Dellinger, two, well, two things I would say, one, the first one is, to your point about, you know, when you get information, how much time you need, I, I respect your frustration in that regard, of course, I've served on the council for a number of years, and all five council members have various different schedules, and so, you know, to, to always get it to a council member in a timely fashion, for each individual council member is probably almost an impossibility, so at least we have the, we have the process where you generally know when you're gonna have it available, and, you know, if you have, in my view, if you have an agenda available on a Thursday prior to a Monday or Tuesday meeting, you know in advance that's when you're gonna get it, and, you know, it just, just means you have to work with that. I guess to your point about bringing items, if I'm understanding correctly, at work sessions, to some extent, that is done, obviously, some of the things we discuss in work sessions are items that we say, okay, we're gonna, the staff says, we're gonna put this on a future agenda, so, so, so we know that's gonna be there, certainly, that's true on consent matters, but on other matters, it can happen as well. I think what we have to, to do is two things, one is, we have to trust the town manager to certainly be the cog in the wheel that reads and understands council's wishes, but sometimes, maybe even the council hasn't yet decided by majority exactly what it wants to put on there, so we have to make sure we're speaking with one voice as well.
Mr. Mayor, with, with regard to that, it doesn't require consensus for a council member to put something on the agenda. So that's in, you know, that's written in the procedures, it's also part of our ordinances, where it is, one of the powers of being on council is that ability to add things to the agenda as an individual member of the council. And if, if it gets on the agenda, and the other council members don't like it, they can not vote on it, or they can, you know, that's the point.
Understand, understand. Well, let me hear from any other council members who wanna weigh in on this, this discussion, I believe that we're having. You've seen the schedule that is laid out there now, and it's fairly, it's fairly consistent, it's fairly tight. I hear Mr. Dellinger say he thinks the council doesn't have as much input on that as they'd like.
What you can do, Mr. Mayor, is, is that Rodney sent us some things the last couple of months, that can easily be before some work session, we can see it in a, in a form, and, you know, this is the first meeting of the month, this is the second, and the second, both of them could have things added to it, at least you'll see, at least more planning process, because planning knows if things stays on the schedule, planning knows, what, thirty to sixty days out, what the dates may be if everything falls into line, that's, of course, that's if everything falls into line, and all the reviews and everything go, we know how that works, that doesn't always happen that way, but if it just had a work session, just to show us, okay, look, the first meeting next month, there's, there's, so far, we have six items, these are it, three of them are, are public hearings, three of them are just simple, as I say, quickies, five, ten minutes at the most, and then the second meeting, the second meeting, this is what's currently planned for that agenda, there may be nothing on the second meeting, I don't know. I reckon we can ask the clerks, you know, if it's just something that could easily be shown, what may be projected to be on the agenda for the two meetings in the next month, I mean, can that, you got some, I know the first meeting is the next week, so you pretty, have a pretty good idea about the first and the second one, you could say, well, here's two items that we've got so far. Is that, that's not unreasonable, is it?
Oh, he was asking the clerk, but I. Okay, all right. No, we, we try to queue up things, and we try to, no, we, we try to get staff to queue up things, we have a, a little Microsoft Word document where we queue up things for meetings, like, if we know, you know, I gotta do the agenda prep, you know, I'll put that down and say, you know, I'm, I'm gonna try to do it on the second meeting, or the work session in August, but as it gets closer, something else might be more important, so then I'll say, well, this is more important, we don't have time to do this. If it's not pressing, I might move it to the next work session, so we have a little list, it's, it's maybe two meetings, well, I've been sending it to you, but it's maybe two to three meetings out, it's not always, you know, way, way out there. The one thing I did wanna mention, the only one caveat you would have, well, maybe I shouldn't wait, but the one caveat you would have to discussing agenda items at the work session is just making sure you don't get too deep into, talking about an S U P that's coming up, special use permit, the content, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's not what I would, that's not what it'd be for.
One other thing, too, reviewing it at the work session, I think, could work really well, the, the one challenge with is if the work session is oftentimes the night before the agenda items are due for the first meeting of the month, so it might be, if council ever chose to do this, it might be that we could review at the August work session for the October agenda, and that may seem too far out at first, but if you, if council wanted to discuss something at a work session and make fundamental changes to something that may not already be on the agenda, there's oftentimes that there'd only be one day to react to what we heard at the work session, to prepare it for the next one, so it, it, it might not leave enough time, depending on what council wants us to do, if it's just a review of what's coming, we could always do that, it just wouldn't leave time if a new item needed to be prepared, so we could look a whole month out if ever needed to.
We would say, well, let's rush, put something on the next agenda, I don't think that's what I'm suggesting, but it gives us foresight, and again, I think, looking at what, at the coming agenda and removing something or moving something might be something, but not adding, I don't think adding anything, we still, again, I think the schedule you have, you can pretty much keep the rhythm of submissions and all that kinda stuff, but there needs to be an input, an input point for, for council, again, so we don't take you guys off guard with a request, and we can, we know what's coming, and we can kinda time things we may want to put on the agenda without being too disruptive.
Okay, Mr. Vance, do I wanna hear from you?
I have nothing of substance to add to this conversation at this time.
We'll wait till Ms. Perry, she's coming back now, but anything further down here? Well, I know, yeah, just a general comment, yeah, putting the agenda together and getting it ready always on time without any surprises, or sometimes last-minute changes is a, is a challenge, because those things can happen, and of course, this is taking place in the context of either normal activities that occur, or sometimes abnormal things that occur that come up that you can't even predict, so I'm not saying that is an excuse, that's just the reality of the, of the lives and that they are involved with on a day-to-day basis, so whatever we do, we obviously wanna give our staff ample time to, to prepare the things that we need, that the council wants and needs to have for its meeting, and, you know, some weeks, that's easier than others, because some weeks are lighter than others, just like some meetings last longer than others. But it's a worthwhile discussion to have, and perhaps, Mr. Manager, we can, we can take some of the thoughts and ideas here, and maybe, maybe come back to council with, with some specific ideas and recommendations that we can tweak the process, and, and see if we can do it better.
Right, and we have some questions here, and I think we already pre-answered some of them, you know, we could look at the. You know, we could look at the process of how we put things on the agenda with council, more council input. And then it was mentioned possibly changing the meeting schedule, the Monday meeting to a Tuesday. So, um, we'll go back and look at those and then if there's any other thoughts, you can submit those to me or to town clerk.
Ms. Perry, I meant to give you an opportunity if you wanted to weigh in any further.
I would be fine with changing it so that all the meetings are on Tuesday, that's easier to keep up with and hopefully it would give staff a little more time. But I am also fine with leaving it the way it is. Staff knows what they have to do, we don't. We see what they bring to us here. And, um, I don't think that it is fair or right for us to make assumptions about what they are or are not doing. And we don't know the day-to-day responsibilities and the schedules they have to maintain. I think there needs to be some mutual respect.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Also mentioned, I think, I was sitting here thinking, we, I told you we changed the work session from a Monday to a Tuesday and we made the last Tuesday, but I believe before when it was a Monday, it was the fourth Monday. That's how, something else you had to keep up with. The first Monday, Tuesday after the third Monday, it was the fourth Monday.
Yeah, we changed it to the last.
And you got a five-week thing and we changed it to Tuesday, we went to the last Tuesday to make it simple. But then you had to remember the fourth Monday, 'cause if it was the five Mondays in the week, it wasn't the last one, it was the fourth one. Good gosh, sometimes you needed that, uh, 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 cheat sheet with you all the time, even when the heck you were gonna meet. Uh, but anyway, if you wanna do Tuesdays, that's fine, it resolve one day, um, whatever, if the ca, if the staff thinks it's advantageous, let us know.
Be consistent.
We'll go back and evaluate that and see how it affects our schedule and any other processes we have and look at any technology and talk it over with department heads and come back with recommendations.
Okay, and, and I'll probably, uh, seek to, uh, be involved with that as much as I can be or without getting in the way. But, uh, uh, for sure. Thank, thanks for your time on that Rodney and for council's, uh, observation participation. I think we all have the same desire and that is to work as effectively and efficiently as we can and make sure council has its, uh, proper input in preparing the, the agendas. So, uh, let me see, are we finished? We are now to, uh, council reports, or actually, uh, Rodney, did you have anything else under manager?
Just wanted to talk to you about the, um, the September twenty-second meeting and our plans for that. You know, I sent you some information, be a little different than a typical meeting. Um, just kind of, uh, um, response to some of the conversation about growth and, uh, all the different topics around that. So, um, what I sent to you and staff proposed is that we have a long session on the twenty-second, kinda like a growth retreat, if you wanna call it that, and cover a few, um, topics related to growth. Get some of our, um, partner agencies here, um, that, the things that affect growth, like our, you know, water sewer, um, transit, um, and some of those things that have effect on our growth and talk about, um, you know, our plans and our future plans and just answer any questions about E T J. Wake County's in the process of, um, updating its, um, is it comprehensive plan, right? Um, so talk about that and how it might affect the town of Garner and, and the things they're doing. Um, 'cause you know, we're annexing county property, so that's gonna affect, affect us and the way we grow. So, anything else in that list that I didn't mention?
Well, that, that meeting would be earlier, but it, it would be here at Town Hall or somewhere else.
It would be, uh, we'll have to look at that, 'cause we'll have to see if we need to have some spacing um, to, to do that with the presentations we're gonna have. Uh, it's possible we may have to do it at the, the auditorium, but we'll look in, or I don't think we can do it upstairs.
The thought had been that, um, we could do it here, hopefully break for about, you know, a, a reasonable dinnertime. You know, if we met at four to six-thirty or so, had a break for dinner. And what we've done in the past when we've done this is still allow council convene your meeting at seven so that if anybody didn't know it was a special night and they were just coming to the seven o'clock meeting, you're reconvening around your regular time. And then we could pick up on a couple more of the, the growth topics and then the rest of the regular agenda was, is, is a way we've handled this kinda thing in the past, so we could go that same way if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, council, I'm sure all, all of you received an email from the town manager and, and some of you have already weighed in on the feasibility of doing that. We'd start the meeting early and a break for, for dinner and then sorta have a resumption of that afterwards in conjunction with, shall I say, the regular meeting. Uh, the agenda hopefully would accommodate, uh, the fact that we would, would've been here, uh, in advance for those things as well.
We're so far until we heard back from council, we were trying to limit the, that night to primarily those topics or very related topics.
Right, okay.
Oh, Campo was the other agency I was thinking about that we could also hear from.
It would be good if we could have it here in a training room and make that work. It's, uh, auditorium, it's, uh, that's a little tough for some of us over there, just where we're spread out and the fans are going on and just cannot hear everything and it's, uh...
But we'll try to make it work here, the best we can.
Okay, so council understands that, that's the plan going forward is to, is to meet on the twenty-second and to meet early.
What else is on the agenda for the twenty-second other than the growth stuff?
Um, oh, sorry. I, I, I was thinking we had taken everything off for the most part, is there something?
We have, uh, the finance director has one, um, fairly brief item just regarding the approval of financing for vehicles. Now, he's here if he needs to answer that.
That's pretty quick.
And then that's the first meeting that we could bring back the Joan Sausage Road contract. So, that's semi-related, I mean, it's not exactly, but it's related enough to growth. And it, um, the only other thing might be a very brief, uh, ceremonial presentation, just because that's the only night the party's involved might could be here. But that's the only other things currently on the agenda.
So, I got those hearing, the hearing notices for the sixth, the eighth, sorry. And there are, there's a commercial one and then there are two other developments, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And I would tell you, Kathy was, we were observing the planning commission meeting for one of those projects. And there was significant citizen representation, even given the social distancing. You have a little bit of concern on cramming all of those into one meeting. It makes for a really long night and there was a lot of interest. And I know it's, it, it is what it is, but it seemed like that's kind of a crammed, um, agenda for all three of those. And I don't know if...
Might wanna go back and look at the planning commission's video, if we have one, or the notes, because that, there were two items on that meeting and it, I left at nine o'clock and they weren't done. So, that, that is a long time. I mean, if there's a way to compress those presentations some, that would be good, too. But don't wanna leave out any information, but those were extremely long presentat, well, one of them was.
For, that's for planning commission.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if y'all wanna look at moving one of them to the next night. I think having them both on the same evening would prove to, or even three, would prove to be challenging to get in and done and...
Okay.
Just a little concerned about...
Okay, I'm hearing, uh, staff saying they will look at and perhaps reevaluate that. Okay, was there anything else, Mr. Manager?
We sent out, the clerk sent out the, uh, the minutes from the retreat, so you should have that in your email. So, just, just to give you time to review that before it comes to a council meeting for approval.
When, when do you anticipate it coming to the council for approval?
Uh, it, it could be the first meeting in September, if you want, or it could be later. But they need to be adopted just like meeting minutes. So, um, you, we got an extra week, so we wanna go ahead and get them to you early. Instead of the Thursday before the meeting, so wanted to make sure.
Instead of going to the beach, some of us could read those minutes on Labor Day.
Yeah, 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 they're not bad, they're not bad.
Well, you're right, I could.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Unless there's a pressing need, with the six being busy, we could push it out, but you know, but, but we wanna try to get them approved and turned around in a timely fashion, so.
Is that, that, that's the first meeting in September, is that right?
The eighth is, yeah.
Yeah.
That's moved over a day anyway, from, but Monday is Labor Day, am I right on that? So, we won't be meeting on that Monday but that Tuesday. You have an extra day to read them, okay?
And to, just to the point of the...
If we see any edits, go ahead and, if you could just... Go ahead and let us know, then we can go ahead and get that taken care of, 'cause then if we could put it on consent, it would make it go back quicker for a long meeting, so.
To, just to the point on the agenda discussion and also the, the hearings, public hearings, you know, this is one of those situations where you, you wanna be fair and consistent with your developers and their expectations. And so, the more head foresight we can have, uh, the more we can make those kinda recommendations, so they're less disruptive and we can kind of, um, set expectations a little bit better on, on some of that stuff, too. So, I think we'll get better as we get, go forward and through it. Um, just again, I think it'll work better for everybody once we, uh, get more insight.
Okay, all right. Uh, we're ready for council reports.
Is there one other thing?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Follow-up question. If we were to be able to move anything from the first meeting to the second one, um, it might, we may want to look at the schedule for the afternoon and see how much of the development, of the growth-related things we could put in the afternoon. Does council know what their availability would be? Like, what would be the earliest start time that council would be able or willing to start on Tuesday, a Tuesday afternoon?
I know I gotta...
Right now you're proposing a, a four o'clock start, is that right?
Three-thirty or four o'clock, I think we have put out there.
Then whether or not we could start earlier than that.
I'm just gauging people's availability before we go and look at the other scheduled things. Could work.
Yeah, I could.
We need to, we need to do two, I'll make it work.
I don't, I don't think we need to go earlier than three o'clock, um, I don't.
I can make three o'clock work.
We don't want to make your afternoon so, so heavy that it makes your evening even, even worse. But it, that, that may just, that moving one may just cause us to want to, to change that. And then, um, if we've got a development case coming in, we would likely just put that as the first, if, if the mayor's agreeable to it in council, we could just make that public hearing the first thing that happened when you came back from dinner, knowing that we might then skip over to another topic and, um, if we couldn't move all those things into the afternoon. Does that work for y'all? Okay, thank you for that.
So, John, you looking at schedule three?
Um, tentatively right now and we'll send out confirmation as soon as we talk to all the partners who, um, are gonna participate. We have sessions with them coming up to plan everything, so we'll confirm with them and let you know.
Three o'clock's what we're aiming for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna start with, uh, Mr. Matthews this time for any council reports.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, uh, I've noticed, I, I drive on Fifth Avenue lot, uh, with my work, on Bank Four to the banks in that area. And I've noticed on the north side of Fifth Avenue, in front of the newer section, the streak of buildings, the strip of buildings, not streak of buildings, strip of buildings, businesses there on the north side of, of Fifth Avenue. Uh, amazing lot of trash on the sidewalk and in the curb and gutter. I don't mean a little bit, I mean, the last two or three weeks, I don't know why it's accumulating there, but a lot of trash. I noticed, I didn't see any trash receptacles out there. And I don't know if we need to talk to the, to the owner of the property, but, uh, it's a lot of trash. I mean, when the cars moved from the curb, I saw, you know, so much, and I was like, why is all this trash? And I noticed the sidewalk and there was trash everywhere, I, I mean, just different types of trash. I don't know, pie gets there, how it got there, but there are no trash receptacles in that area. A lot of it was like cups or fast food bags or so forth and, and I think everybody's going to Arby's and coming down there and throwing their trash, and I, this is not where it's coming from, I just don't think that's the case. So, if we could reach out to the owner of that property and see if we could talk to them about getting some trash receptacles out there, that would be, that would be emptied on a regular basis, being someone who goes into strip shopping centers like that where they have trash cans that are not emptied on a regular basis. If it's not emptied on a regular basis, you might as well not even have them out there. And just tell you, I haven't seen them overflowing on, on the ground. Uh, it's just something I've noticed, I don't know why.
Is it a vape store there?
It's, it's all up and down the whole strip, it's not just one of them. So, uh, you know, they don't sell drink cups at the vape store, I don't think. I don't think they sell big drink cups, I don't know if it's, and I'm not saying it's the, uh, 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 the fresh fruit, the juice place. I'm not saying it's their cups, I don't know whose they are, I'm not trying to say it's all from this place. It's just all kinds of stuff, cups, bags, pa, paper, newspapers. And I'm just like, where did all this trash come from all of a sudden? And again, the last two, three weeks is when it's been so bad, don't know why. I don't know if the wind blew it over there from the parking lot across the road, but that's not that bad a shape. But it catches at the curb, that's where I see so much of it on the sidewalk. It's just, that's a high-traveled area and, and maybe we just got a lot of, I know we got some litter bugs in other parts of town and maybe that's just the situation. But, uh, if we could look and talk to the, to the developer, the owner of the property to put some trash cans out there, it might be a help. You know, I'm not pointing the finger at a business, I'm just saying it's out there.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Singleton, sure enough, um, I'll make another comment on that, but I'll go back there. Let's see, I'm gonna skip and go there and then work my way back this way. You okay, Cat?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get you.
Mr. Vance?
All right, just a few items, uh, on Main Street, you, you may already know this, but the recently in-place fence along the, uh, railroad and the, and the, and the parking, uh, there's a damaged spot on there that's been like pushed, uh, pushed in, probably from somebody doing some work on the railroad, but that fence is damaged now.
Yes, sir, that, we actually had a car that jumped the, all the way across the railroad from Crete Road and took out the town's power service that powers all of our downtown public lights and that section of fence. That was about five, six, maybe weeks ago somewhere. And, um, I, I think they were waiting to, to repair the fence until we got all the power service done. I think we've gotten our power service about finished. Um, there was a company working on the, on the D O T right-of-way at the intersection today at those power boxes. I'm guessing that was continued repairs, but, yes, sir, we are...
Yeah, I, I had seen the electrician working on those power boxes last week also, so...
Fortunately, the pedestrians or, or motorists were harmed, but that was a pretty scary situation that someone was going through the Crete Road intersection fast enough to jump them.
Oh, yes.
Were they impaired or just crazy?
I don't know. Oh, they were, oh, you do, okay, it was impaired.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll... I'm just laughing at what, uh, Councilman Barrett just said. Uh, but, uh, it could've been both. But, uh... But also in reference to a recent, um, request that was placed for looking into the flooding of properties on proximity of Bagwell Street, appreciate the rapid concern, the rapid response to the, uh, citizen concern on that one and like to thank, uh, the Public Works for going out there and looking at that quickly. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Uh, yes, on Thursday, I'll be attending a meeting for Passage Home. I got in touch with Seth, Seth over there, so I'll be going to the, on their board meetings and doing some other research, what I've, I've looked at other municipalities and I wanna pass this out to council. This is, um, some information that Apex has been putting together with regards to housing affordability and price points of income versus their available housing stock. And, um, I'd like to give, and I'd like to share that with, um, the planning commission and maybe with Mr. Mercer and have us over maybe the next month or so, uh, come up with a, kind of a similar graphic just to kinda show where we fall. Um, it, it's really actually very interesting and even in, uh, one-sixty-D, there are some provisions in there that allow for, uh, continue to allow for municipalities to do some work with regards to preserving housing affordability, um, or promoting it, I should say, not mandating it, but promoting it. Um, really from the perspective too, even if we say in Garner, uh, assumption that half of it is workforce housing, we're growing by fifty percent, so then you're down to a third. Well, that third, over time, is gonna appreciate in value and just the pie piece just continues to shrink. And given where Apex is, just in terms of their population, you know, they're just now trying to aggressively tackle this problem. I think that if we could start to look at it with a discerning eye and look at data, we could, um, be ahead of where they are in trying to play catch-up. So, that's my only piece on that. It's really great graphic. Um, the other thing, I just wanna thank the inspections department, had a concern from a constituent about a neighbor and some work they were doing and they were very responsive. So, I wanna thank the inspections department for helping out with that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Cat?
Oh, yes, I, there are some properties on West Garner Road that need mowing. Uh, four oh-two I turned in over a week ago and it still has not been mowed, it looks like a jungle out there. And also the duplex at the corner of Penny Street and West Garner Road, one oh-six, I believe, and one oh-eight is, one side of it's empty and again, the, the grass is more than a foot... and 108 is, one side of it's empty and again, the grass is more than a foot tall, about, maybe two feet tall, but it needs to be mowed. And also wanted to tell you about a virtual meeting I attended this afternoon for the League of Women Voters. Today marks 100 years since women were granted the right to vote in the United States. And so there was a celebration and a brief bit of history given. And two things that I did not know and I, to my discredit, because I should have, one was that one of the, one of the many reasons that there was a move to keep women from getting the right to vote back in 1920 was that if women got the right to vote in the United States, that would mean women of color as well and the white supremacists did not want that. And that is a blight on our history, but I'm glad that I understand that now. The other piece was that part of the reason the requirement to show picture ID to vote has been taken away is because in many, many cases, women who were either, who got married and changed their name but did not get their driver's license name changed, were denied the right to vote. Or women who'd become divorced and resumed their maiden name, again, their name on their driver's license did not match their legal name at the time, they were also denied the right to vote. So understanding our history gives us a better way of dealing with it going forward. So it was a very good celebration and good work that they do.
Okay, thank you very much and for that point of history as well. I'll be very brief. I would remind all council members that the legislature passed requirements that I believe all, I guess after every election, that we all complete ethics training. Ms. Gibson has given to each of you, well, she's given you the outline for how that occurs and I think in the last couple of cycles, Ms. Given, Gibson, we've asked individual council members to go online and to basically take that training there, is that right? And then we need to have some confirmation that that's been done. Maybe, I don't know if you can sign online or we need to bring that information back to you, would that be right?
Yes, when you finish the form, add that you have to sign.
Yes.
We'll keep it on file in the first row.
Okay. And while you have some time to do it, I would encourage you to go ahead and try to get that done fairly soon. It's good material. The other thing I would mention is sort of related to that and this is maybe for the benefit of our newer members, even though I think they're probably aware, but the School of Government is an excellent resource and I know when I was first elected, I attended a couple of their courses and those times they were in person and you went over there for a day or a half day or whatever, but they give out some good information, so I would encourage you to consider those. They're probably all done virtually now, I think, with a variety of different topics, but also you get to interact, of course, with other elected people from around the state and that kind of dialogue and exchange, I think, is good and helpful. I guess the final thing I would say, for those who are watching or hear, we talked some about the concern of council members with, I don't think there's any way to make it prettier, trash about our town and, you know, as we all travel, many times we see trash on our roadways, we see it in other areas and it is unsightly, it's unhealthy. And so I would just try to challenge all of you to do what you can to, I guess, educate your neighbors and others and when you have a chance to politely see people who may be littering, to let them know. And I want to thank those citizens that I meet from time to time who make it part of their, sometimes their daily walk. I know of at least two or three people, in fact, even a neighbor of mine, most of the time when she goes walking, she takes along a trash bag with her and many times she comes back with a full bag. One of the things I think we may want to consider is whether or not there, there's feasibility in putting some receptacles out there along certain roadways or whatever. I know one gentleman who said, you know, I picked up a full bag and then I didn't know where to put it. Of course, if you just put it on the sidewalk, it's...
Put it in his own trash can.
Well, yeah, sometimes it gets so heavy that it's a real challenge. So anyway, I want to thank those citizens who are, who are doing what they can to resolve that problem and maybe if we just have all of our citizens more conscious of that, I've thought about whether or not there's a merit in trying to start some type of a publicity campaign to encourage that. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I think that's a very good idea. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but let's keep that in mind, some kind of publicity campaign to keep our town looking good. I don't, Rick can help us with the wording, but let's, let's make that a goal.
Yeah.
To start a campaign that way.
It's certainly a worthwhile one and in the scheme of things, some people might say it's not as important and it is and there's some things, but it's something that we can all work on and thank those, I want to thank those citizens who are already doing that and it's something we all just need to be conscious of, okay? Having said that, I thought I had one other item, but I didn't make a note of it, so I think that's it. Anything else for the good of, from the council, for the good of the meeting?
You might want to mention, one of our older residents had a birthday this past week.
107.
Yes, Ms. Nellie Cook. We, many of you know Reverend Tracy Bell, I believe he is what, a great nephew of hers?
Nephew, yes, yes.
Is that a way to say it, yeah? 107 years old. I was told, I don't have Spectrum TV, but I was told that maybe, they may have come out and have done some recognition. Anybody see that?
They did, it was on Channel Five and also Spectrum may have come also. They both had it up there.
Okay.
She formerly lived on part of the property back behind the rec center on Monarchy Street, one of the houses that we purchased a few years ago, so.
That's right. And the mayor had the opportunity to sign a little proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the council, congratulating her and had a chance to do a little video, which was fun to do. So Ms. Nellie, if you're listening or any of your family members, again, we congratulate you. That's, that's just an amazing milestone to reach for anybody and God bless you.
Mr. Mayor, a few years ago, we did have another citizen, it's been several years now, Ms. Essie Perry lived to be 106, so there must be something good happening in Garner.
One of Mr. Johnson's, last, his luncheon said he had, he had, I took the gentleman meals and wheels for years when going on the road, right around the corner from your house, Kathy, I can't think of his name all of a sudden, but he was 105 at the time and he came and stood up at that meeting and there was someone else there, 103.
And Ms. Nellie had been at the luncheon the year before, I think.
Right, and so Mr., I can't think of the gentleman's name, I don't take his meals anymore and he's on the list, I don't know if he passed away, but he was 105 at the time and somebody else was 103 and Ms. Nellie has been there also, so it's pretty amazing.
I was just thinking of the three L's and then now that I think about it, I'm not sure it fit very well, but I was thinking, maybe we could change our motto to the, to the land of long livers. But you have to be careful how you say that last word, I guess.
Don't, don't.
L-mo won't let me get over that one, okay. Thank you all, I appreciate the service that you rendered at our town and coming to these meetings and so I believe we're going to get out earlier tonight than we sometimes do, but appreciate the conversation and all the responses. So I guess we'll be seeing you again tomorrow morning, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so don't forget that. Starts at eight, nine?
Eight forty-five is sort of the arrival, you need a snack, that kind of thing, and then nine is when the...
Official time starts, yeah, okay. Thank you, Matt, sure enough. All right, so for the good of the council, entertain a motion adjourned. Okay, second, all in favor say aye. All right, adjourned, thank you.